All right, welcome. I would like to call the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee to order. And we will be heading into executive session, so if someone could read the motion.
Move that the Concord Carlisle School Committee enter into executive session under purpose three of the open meeting law to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Concord Carlisle Teachers Association and return to open session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, roll call.
Anderson, aye.
Who's aye?
Marano, aye.
Tell aye.
Randy, aye.
Rankin, aye.
Whit, aye.
All right, we'll be back, thank you. Welcome back, everybody. It is a little after six. We are going to start our regular meeting and we're going to start with our high school students. I'm not on the Zoom yet, so let's see if Harry and Zari and Felicity are with us. I think they are.
Yeah, so it's actually just gonna be me this week. Felicity and Zari are unfortunately not able to be here, but they were able to help work on that update with me, so. Just give me one, sorry. I still have problems with the screen share. But that's okay, I can just do it verbally again.
Okay.
So we don't have too much to talk about this week. Obviously, we're just coming back now from February break, so I'm kind of getting a slow start into things, but with the exception of girls' basketball and boys' hockey, which have games today and tomorrow, the winter sports teams have wrapped up their season. A couple athletes going to New England and nationals and things for their respective sports, but we're mostly looking ahead to the spring. And then a number of students are also still on the school trip to New Zealand, I think. They'll be there the rest of the week, so I think they're having a lot of fun. I know many of us in Concord are jealous. And also this week additions have begun for the musical, which is, again, the prong. And then next Tuesday on March 5th, we have the multicultural food fest. It'll be my second in my time here at the high school. And then that Saturday as well, we have IQH Fest, so two very exciting CC traditions. I know, I will be intense at both of those, very excited. And then just in general, student senate is continuing to work on the blood drive and art night and then some other spring activities that have been works.
Great, and are you done with track, Harry?
Yes, I am.
And so on to outdoor track for you. All right, well, thanks so much. Thanks for the update, always very informative. And I just also want to mention that the CCHS swim team, the girls were first in states and I think the boys were sixth. So I think it was their first time in program history being first?
Yes.
Very exciting. All right, well, thanks so much. And we look, our next meeting, just so you guys know, we are meeting at Mettaco Inc. in Boston and we will have Zoom available, or if you want to come, either way.
What's the date?
March 12th.
Perfect, thank you so much.
All right, thanks, Harry.
Aye.
All right, and we are going to continue on with some of our students. And our recognition tonight is with our students from IQH, and it looks like they're online. Dr. Hunter, would you like to say anything about this?
I'm sorry, it's really tight quarters here tonight. I don't know why. So as part of our recognition site, and Ms. Stahl and Mr. Miller are here too, if they want to chime in, we thought it would be a great opportunity to talk with some of the students who work at the radio station and are an integral part of that program. So I think they're on Zoom, there they are.
Maybe they're running a radio show at the same time.
Probably. So if they're ready, we'd love to hear from them, and I think they have some things prepared to share. Or maybe we should just turn on the radio.
For those of you at home, you can.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, my name is.
So this is Ned Ruse, our radio station manager, hi Ned.
Hi, how are you?
Great.
Are you able to hear us okay?
Yes, perfect.
We are, we are radio people, so being on TV is not normal.
Amazing.
So what I like to do actually, the computers that I'm on, I have a little video that, or slideshow that will go along with the presentation. But the other big computer that we have here is the one that's got, the rest of the managers will actually be doing this presentation. And that computer may be showing up if you are able to switch to Ben Redmond's computer.
They, yeah, they have to unmute, there you go.
Hello.
There you go.
All right, let's do this.
So, do I wish?
Uh, sure.
Do I have to do a screen share?
Ned, you might want to mute your microphone, because I think we're getting both microphones.
Yeah, I'll keep that down.
Okay, um, I guess we should introduce ourselves.
Yeah.
Um, I guess I'll start. Um, I'm Ben Redmond, I'm a senior here at CCHS, and I'm the tech director. Yeah.
Cool, I'm one of the two clerks in WIQH management, Claire Razor, I'm a sophomore and I head the training department.
I'm Joe Tannenbaum, I'm also a sophomore and I'm co-director for sports.
Oh, I'm Claire Owen, I'm the second clerk and I'm the programming director.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ben, do you have anything else that you'd like to say before we go to start this presentation?
No, we're really excited to be here. It's the first for a lot of us. As is evident. Now you're screen sharing guys.
Technical difficulties.
Oh, it's totally fine, we have them all the time. You're doing great.
No.
Oh, Lord.
No, fill the bio, we'll keep you there.
You're doing great, be patient.
Yay.
Yay.
All right.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were, I thought you were in Wisconsin, okay. Sure, okay, so this first slide is, oh, never mind. Here we are, IQH 83M, here we are with our lovely IQH celebration near Thanksgiving, where we have all the radio station members come and we eat pie, and it's really fun. And it's just a really nice, like, community building activity. It's one of our more kind of open celebrations with the school. Sometimes we have friends come in even though they're like not supposed to be there, but, I mean, it's nice, it's awesome. We also have parent teacher takeover week where DJs can invite their parents or favorite teachers to come on and do shows with them. I remember last year I did a show with my mom and that was really fun.
Go back to my parents.
Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, um, it's a great way for people who don't really understand what we do here to get on the air. And everybody leaves thinking that it's so much more complicated than you originally thought. I think I kind of, I got, I pulled the short straw, it was my first time ever going out on the air before I passed my DJ test, so I was really nervous, and it didn't help that we played a song twice in a row, but I'm still here, you know.
All right, this photo is from Studio One with our old seniors, one of which, I think, no, two, maybe even all three were in the sports department, Gerald.
Yeah, they were, yeah.
They were, do you want to talk a little bit about this?
I think one of them is webcom school, the other, well, they're, they're DJing, they're DJing web show, it was about sports. It was very good.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Another photo, Studio One.
Yeah, and these are a few of our other graduated DJs.
Yeah.
This is Ben Murphy, our, our entire news department, really remarkable for only a sophomore. This is him working out one of our, like, in-studio little working place, I, never mind.
We call it Edit One.
We call it Edit One, we call it her Edit One.
But we call it a lot of, like, the industry, so.
Yeah, yeah, recently, I think just yesterday, he interviewed Simon Cataldo, our representative for his news report on MBTA communities, but also the closing of the prison near the road reading. So that's pretty cool. It's not, we're not just at CC guys, we get out, we're everywhere.
And this, you might argue that is the person in this photo, this is Ben Redmond.
I know.
Broadcasting, um, this is broadcasting kicks.
Yep.
This is broadcasting kicks for cancer in, from Studio One to controlling the entire live broadcast. And you can talk more about this.
Um, every time we do games, also, we have two studios here and we can run the station off of both of them. We can kind of run the station from Edit One, but we need to be in Studio One or Studio Two to kind of facilitate it. And we do games when we go to porch fest and tree lighting and the book sale. Every time we're not in the studio, we have somebody in the studio kind of working the, working the board, playing PSAs and songs and kind of being the guy behind the scenes. And I have had so much fun doing that and I'm teaching a bunch of new people how to do that this year.
Good.
Is there anything more to that?
No, it's just really, really fun.
Gerald, it's your department!
That, that's the sports broadcast from Kicks for Cancer, I believe that was the boys varsity game from Kicks for Cancer. That's, on the left is the other sports director for the radio, Dan Kirsty. And a few graduated seniors, I believe, along with Matt Hitchcock, is also part of the sports department.
My God, two more! Gerald, jealous, yeah.
That's from the boys soccer state final, finals, which we won, go CC. That's, next to me is Lily Caulfield, she's the music director for WIQH.
Yeah.
Ben, who was boarding for this game?
That was freshman Miles Burge, who's been a very integral part of IQH's tech department since he joined in September, kind of doing everything I don't want to do, so very, very grateful for his contributions to the station.
That's, that's a basketball game with Dan Kirsty again and Sam Gilvin, who is a, who is an alumni from last, senior last year, returning, he did a few games this year, he's really good.
Porch Fest, Porch Fest, so, um, Porch Fest is, it got moved to June this year, but it usually happens in September. It's this big music festival in West Concord that the stages are people's front torches. And we got to do, we did it last year and then this year unfortunately it got rained out. And in this photo, we have, in the back, Bridget Batsburg is a senior. I'm going to take the last name, it's Aysick Allen, yeah, okay, he graduated last year. And then Christian Palmer, who was our general manager, and Christian Palmer's currently reading from the book of PSAs, which are basically, we have, part of our, we have kind of a community on things. It has a DAPM guideline by the SEC. So we get, we have some fun with them, I think, but he's just reading the list, we always send out a couple, every remote and they have, they do good.
The sound's not working.
We had, we, we're going to play a few of them, but the sound's not working, so. What's your favorite KSA, guys? Don't listen, I would say, Eric.
No, definitely will. Sadly, right now, we're not airing the PSA because it's not in season, but my favorite is the one for the Concord journal post site with Gotter, Wantter, Got stuff, wait, no, Wantter, Gotter, Got stuff for Inser. Because me and myself, those Gabby, Wednesdays, Fridays, we would always, um, say that PSA. It's just like, I feel like everybody has their variation also.
Yeah, it's your voice.
Yeah.
Cheers, player.
Well, I like one for Gossamer, I'll be original and say the texting and driving PSA. I just think some of the phrases in it are funny, they say like, get that pick away from your face or something, you know. It's pretty unique for you to.
Gerald, be.
Probably all the ones I can to be on the.
Gerald, Gerald is quite the, quite the PSAer, brother.
Yes.
I think Edit One is the one I made about heading mode. Totally biased, but I had a lot of fun making it, so, yeah.
Yeah, this was from the tree lighting last year in the Rock Center. This year sadly, it was canceled because of the rain and the bad weather, but.
We pivoted.
We pivoted. Scary.
Yeah, and then they, instead of being outside, we were in the gym and with very little time, we pulled together and added a really awesome remote, do you remember how we ended the remote?
Yeah, I remember how we ended the remote, I got the inflatable snowmobile that bounced around quite quick. Yeah. Male Henry Cap, mother DJ, so.
Someone.
My God, Gerald, you again!
So Gerald was so graciously invited to get in the frosty costume and meet all the, all the kids, we're so very excited to see him. And then it just goes to show how dead he is, so, no, they're not going to rage.
Hi, Paul Credit. No, okay, so, this was last year's WIQH broadcast of the Concord Library Book Sale. In the photo, left to right, Bridget Batsburg, senior Christian Palmer, Mr. Hank Roden, me in the middle, Gabrielle Widdens, sophomore, and Ben Redmond, senior. This was probably one of my favorite remotes, because I felt like, since based on the library is so open, we didn't really have like a tent box and stuff, so I feel like he just felt so much more welcome, like, come up, say hi, take any candy, put the WIQH logo printed on it. And honestly, one of my favorite things is like getting song requests, because I just, and I don't know, it makes me feel like so much more connected with my audience. I mean, like, sometimes on radio, it just kind of feels there's, it kind of feels like you're speaking into the void and you, like, you really don't know who's listening or what's listening, but.
I came pretty late to that remote, um, but, yeah. Yeah, when I got there though, um, within like 20 minutes I was there, there are two people that came up and said they were station members and they went to high school year, terrible, I was stopped, little.
Sure, this was from National High School Radio Day last April, as you can see in this photo, it is Lola Cruzer and Cameron Cloud, he would, uh, who do it, Miss Stahl, Miss Miller, and also Miss Wolf sitting in. We started having abstractness with rating there, where we just broadcast from the learning comments. It's really nice, because I feel like the rating, it just, just geographically in the school is kind of tucked away and put off to the side, but here it's just like much more open and you're in a place that has so much more traffic on the day to day, so it's really nice to have people like in and out and also just see all the things, so.
Yeah. Quickly, my question.
Um, quickly, it's, uh, we've been told to wrap it up. This is a photo of last year in IQH Fest, it is a really awesome music festival on the station, kind of hosts. It is next Saturday, yeah, but my brain is working to probably, um, and it is a great way for, to kind of bridge the gap between the performing arts department and like the band, and WIQH, so, yeah. I'm well, hey guys, can I let you watch it off the screen? Yeah, it's awesome, yeah.
This was excellent. I have to say, so for those people that are listening at home, you can listen to IQH in your car radio within a five mile radius of the high school, I believe it is, and Ned, correct me if I'm wrong. And it's on 88.3, or you can listen online if you go to WIQ, I think it's dot com, and you'll see a lineup of. Org, sorry, you'll see a lineup of all of the shows that they have each week, so if you have a favorite, and I have to shout out to a past favorite of mine, Jenny, Jenny Jay, Ned, you know who I'm talking about, I still listen to her show every single week in my car ride. And so it's really a great opportunity to listen to you guys online and know that there are parents, there are kids listening all the time. You don't even realize who's listening, and those PSAs are hugely important too. I had a couple of enjoyable ones at the time. But the other thing I will say is, I think that Ms. Stahl and Mr. Miller really enjoy the radio show, and they could have second careers in radio, so I would invite them both on, because they are some of the reasons that got me through COVID. They were actually on the radio, none of you guys were at the high school, but they did this amazing radio show, and they did it a few times, and my entire family listened to it, we even called in. I mean, we really weren't doing anything, but they really have quite the knack for the radio. So shout out to Ms. Stahl and Mr. Miller on that, it was great. But you guys, thank you so much for this. If anyone has any questions for our IQH friends?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was so fun.
All right, moving on to public comment. And we will start with public comment in the room, and then we will go online. Do we have any public comment tonight? Okay, I'm going to read my public comments spiel. Hold on one second. You can, if you have a blue sheet, you can bring it up to me, and then you can make your public comment.
She has a blue sheet.
You don't have a blue sheet?
That's true, just enunciate your.
Okay, so if you can state your name and address, our public comment period is a period of 20 minutes, you'll have three minutes. And this is a meeting in the public and not with the public, so you can make your statement and then we'll move on. So thank you.
So it's Suzanne Kelleher, and I'm supposed to. I'm supposed to state my address, or what else?
Yes, name and address, thank you.
So Suzanne Kelleher, and I'm 244 Lindsay Pond Road here in Concord. Okay, so thank you for the work that you do in the schools and through the community. So my name is Suzanne and I have four kids, two kid, one in elementary, one at the high school, and two recent grads from the high school. And I appreciate your taking the time tonight to provide updates on the changes to the English program at the high school. What I'm interested in is the data you have for how this will improve the outcomes, and the data that you have showing improvement in our system. As some of you might know, that the Brookline School has piloted English de-leveling this year. De-leveling in the context of creating a heterogeneous groupings of, say, advanced honors and college prep in the same classroom. And in our agenda, I think we refer to it as embedded English. So in Brookline's case, they assigned about 20% of their freshman class to heterogeneous classes, using the remaining 80% of them in the leveled classes. What was interesting about their strategy was that they allowed them to compare the students' success in the regular leveled environment directly with the kids in an embedded environment. So essentially, in Brookline's case, they're treating it almost like a science experiment, where they have a variable and a control. And this is in contrast to how Concord has changed the English program. Essentially, they have, we have changed all the English classes at the high school, in all years, freshman, sophomore, junior and senior, affecting all the students at the high school in a single year, and as far as I know, we didn't pilot. If Brookline deems their pilot successful, they're going to make changes to the ninth grade only, allowing specialization in the future years, so sophomore, junior, senior. And Brookline's stated goal is to ensure that the change is positive for all students. And they've surveyed the students, the parents, the teachers, to assess their success in the program. What's interesting, the two students that they write up on the Brookline's website, like Cypress is the name of it, but it seems to be like their newspaper equivalent. Both the students that they interviewed or had quotes from in the program said they would not take an embedded class in the future after having done the pilots, which is surprising. So what's interesting about that is that our approach, well, the Brookline approach would actually allow them to choose a different path. They could choose to be leveled going forward if they wanted to in Brookline, but our particular implementation would not allow that. So, um, you know, and then they, you know, they went into the details of why those children didn't feel comfortable in that space, or comfortable with the embedded option, but I won't get into that.
Hey, you're at time, sorry.
Okay, so maybe, could you extend me, or I could.
We cannot.
Okay, so.
Somebody else can speak, if you would like somebody else to speak and read your comments.
Sure, or they can redirect the time to me, I've seen that before.
No, we can't, we don't do that.
Okay. Do you want to?
Thank you.
Poor Kristen.
Just name and address, and you'll have three minutes. We're very rigid on our public comment.
Sure, but I have seen them redirect before.
That was a couple of years ago, but we do not redirect, we have people read their comments.
When I say my, it's me, not Kristen.
Go ahead, sure.
Hello, I'm Kristen Hadad, 442 Ener Snack Hill, Concord. My own data, Suzanne's data point at the half year is disappointing. Her sophomore has read one book, a few pages of short stories, and written one essay. Since she can compare it to her graduated daughter's experience, she can share the differences. Her son watched The Crucible while her daughters read it. He watched The Marvels, her daughters read and discussed Catcher in the Rye. Her son's teacher gave challenging prompts and insightful feedback, but on the whole, in her experience, the year's class diminished significantly, 10th grade to 10th grade comparison. She also, we're also aware that a teacher who was in CC when the daughters attended, an English teacher, left midterm, and that just raises concerns about if the teachers feel supported, it's something we're concerned about. Finally, she understands the math department might be making similar changes, and just would like to state a preference for pilot programming. It seems premature to send the entire school to experimental mode, change everything wholesale. She would call for this to be more like Brookline's approach, iterative, assess what works and what does not, and change accordingly. Communication with us stakeholders and information and future plans, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and let's look online. Any public comment online? Okay, any additional public comment in the room? All right, thank you. All right, moving on to our consent agenda, so we have a consent agenda next, does anyone want to pull anything out?
I have two questions.
Yes.
When will the robotics team know if they're going to Houston, that's so cool.
So, we're actually going to, Cynthia had a request to pull that out.
Pull both.
We're going to pull the robotics one, and what's the other one? Microphone, sorry.
So sorry, I think on principle, I think it's so important for us to approve them in public individually, because I think trips are so important to our students, our families. I don't really have a lot of questions about the other one, but I'd just like to talk it up a bit.
So you're pulling out both, so Cynthia's going to pull out both trips? So let's go back to the consent agenda, anyone want to pull anything else out?
Minutes of 1:23, I sent you comments.
You want to pull out the 1:23 minutes?
Yes.
Okay, we'll pull out the 1:23 minutes, anything else? So we, our consent agenda will approve everything else in there, and so I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so let's go back to minutes, Cynthia, from 1:23.
I sent you a ton of comments, so.
Do you want, but do you want to go over the comments?
No, I, I was like, some of it needs to be redone, like, some portions of it, somebody needs to listen to the.
Okay, so if you can put together, you sent us with comments, but do you want us to make all those changes, or?
I think we should, yeah, they're not really accurate in some places.
Okay.
So we can discuss it offline.
Well, I think, can you just dra, can you draft what you want the changes to be? I know you have comments.
Somebody needs to go back, I mean, I'll do the minutes, is that what you're asking me to do? Because it's a lot of changes.
It's a lot of changes, so I'll just send, I'll send them along to Lori and we can just move those, review them. But do you want to just go over any of those for the rest of the committee?
It's a lot, I mean, I wasn't prepared, I thought we were just going to.
Just remove them and redo them? Okay.
We are going to need some guidance, because I've read those personally and I don't know what you're, and we re-rotched the video to create them, so I think we're going to need some ideas of what you found inaccurate or not specific enough.
So why don't we do that, why don't we do that offline, and then we'll just bring it to our March 12th meeting? How about that?
There's just, a lot of people's comments are not put in there, and I think, I don't want it to be a transcript.
It was a five hour meeting, so we're going to need some guidance on how much detail.
We have five hour meetings, we need to have thorough minutes, I mean, that's our choice to have such long meetings.
I would certainly concur, we need accurate minutes. I appreciate it when anybody asks us to take a closer look, I've done the same on some other minutes. I've done the same on some other minutes, and I've been in touch with the chair on that.
Yes.
In regard to this, you made comments to the chair. We've got somebody new doing minutes.
Who I'm working with directly. I haven't seen the comments that you sent, but we need to see.
So I will, I will pass those along.
Would it be suitable to have the chair share with the superintendent, who would share with her employee, who does the minutes, your comments?
I still think we're going to need feedback on how much to capture in a five-hour meeting, so.
So do you want?
So let's, so let's talk offline on those, because some of, some of your comments weren't actually visible. Remember, we went back and forth on that, on the track changes. So let's go back on that. So we're going to pull those minutes, we've requested to pull those, we're not going to vote on those. On to the robotics trip. So we have a robotics team, Carrie, you had a question, so the robotics team is potentially going to Houston, which is exciting.
So Alex Kucharzon, who's the advisor to the Robotics Club, so she can answer any questions you have. There she is. Hi, Alex.
Hello.
So when will you know? Let's start with that.
We will know until the last day of district championships on April 7, and our departure date, if we were to go to Worlds, is April 17.
Oh, wow.
So this request is just sort of provisional, just if we qualify, then we could already have permission from the school committee to say, yes, we would like to help.
Well, we're all very optimistic for you. My biggest question is the $2,000 fee. I'm just concerned that some kids might not be able to go because of the fee, and what, you know, what fundraising, or what ways can we defray the cost? Because I really want everybody to go.
I didn't, I didn't realize this until now, but fundraising, in fact, is underway in earnest.
Yeah.
Yep, it is underway.
They're doing a great job.
Alex can talk to you more on that.
Yeah, we have a brand-new friends group that just became official 501(c)(3), and they've been doing some fundraising. There's currently a Nike on the Town fundraiser, where it's, you can sort of buy chances to win a, it's not a raffle, but it's sort of like a voluntary raffle kind of thing, where you can win a dinner at Wood's Hill table, and I think a night at Boataboard, so go ahead and buy your ticket. I'm pretty excited.
Where would you go to get, buy the tickets?
There's a Google form, you can send a link to Dr. Hunter, and she can share with her students.
Yeah, or the big rest of us.
They're heavily promoted on Instagram. I've seen them. I don't know who I follow, or what is going on with my algorithm, but I see them too, quite a bit. I haven't bought a raffle ticket yet, but now I think I might.
No, it sounds great.
Yeah, this parent group has been phenomenal. They've organized really quickly, and they've done some great fundraising, so that $2,000 per class per student, they're hoping to reduce that by about $300 to $500 per student through those fundraising.
Excellent.
Right.
Just a question to Dr. Hunter about the Sharon Young Fund. What's the status of that?
We have just over $10,000 in there. My understanding has always been that was for the international travel, so we hadn't considered it for these trips. We've been applying it as requests come in and are appropriate for international trips.
Okay.
There's, there's a need there. You probably saw in my Friday email before the break, we're looking for some recruit, recruiting of volunteers to help get that fund actively fundraising, because we will use the money up at some point, and there won't be any left, so we're hopeful for some help there.
And I know two years ago, the team came here, and they were disappointed that they couldn't or didn't go to.
Yes.
I think it was the same location, in fact.
Yes.
So this is such great news, and we're just thinking all such good thoughts about the outcome and your travel. So thank you.
Okay, great. So this, so at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the CCHS robotics trip to Houston, should they make the finals.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Does this constitute our initial approval and our final approval, usually a two-step process?
Yeah, we don't really, given the timing, I don't know quite how to do that.
We're doing so.
Yeah.
So this will be our final approval of this trip? Okay? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck. And then we have, we have the CCHS solar eclipse trip, and that you should have in your packet. Did you want to talk about that, Dr. Hunter?
I may actually ask Mr. Miller to come up and do it, since he's here.
Great. Step right up to the microphone.
Well, I, yeah.
You can sit right there and use that microphone. There you go. Sit and relax with us.
See, this is how we roll. Brian's the one I did all the conversations with, so he automatically was my default, and Katie's in the audience, so.
Great.
I think it's on. It's just for the.
It's on, it's just for Zoom on it.
So we have a request for our ninth grade to go up to Vermont, because there'll be the total, that's where they can see the total eclipse. Rough straw poll, right now, we think a couple hundred students are really interested. We work with Aaron Jankas to make sure those students who are participating in sports could be excused, because they'll come back later than the school day. The plan is that they'll leave right at the start of school, be up there. They have contracted with one of the state uni, or they've been in touch with one of the state universities in Vermont, and spoken with their meteorology professor, who Teresa has a contact with, and they're actually on spring break that week, so their campus is empty, so we can go up there, and we could go up there, and they can watch from one of their fields, use their facilities, go inside if the weather isn't cooperative. And then that professor, and also Charlie Peachey, are going to, are hopeful, assuming you hit, you approve it, would plan to meet with our students to talk about what the eclipse sort of, the science behind the eclipse.
And for those of you that don't know Charlie, he is a 2018 graduate who works at the Mount Washington Observation.
Correct, yeah, he, yeah.
He was in the bridge.
And he was just, he just came back and spoke on one of our alumni panels as well, so.
Excellent.
That's the plan, we.
So it's a whole, whole ninth grade?
A whole, yeah, I mean, pretty much everybody, we think will go. We don't, I mean, I'm sure a few kids maybe will choose not.
No, no, I mean, that's the intention.
The whole, the intention is that, yes, pretty much all the ninth graders will go.
It's really exciting.
Bought some really cool-looking glasses for them, and we'll go from there.
Great opportunity.
Does that help with the details?
Plenty.
Great. Thank you.
What about the kids who don't go?
Yeah, so we'll work that out. We have thrown around a few plans, we just, it'll matter on, right, are five kids not going to go, or are 500? It's not 500, obviously, but right, so once we have the signups, we, I met with the academy leaders yesterday to talk through our plan, and we think our time is best spent. Once we got your approval, then we're going to send out the permission slips, and after that, then we'll make sure we have a solid plan. There'll be a couple teachers who aren't going anyway for whatever reason, so we'll make sure that they have an enriching day as well at CC.
Awesome.
Great. All right, so this will also be a final approval of this trip, so I would entertain a motion to approve the CCHS solar eclipse trip as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Onto correspondence. I am going to start with Alexa here for CPS.
And I have yours, I did yours. At the, at Concord Public, well, pertaining to Concord Public, we only got, really got one. It was about an SEL curriculum, and at the region, I believe.
We had, wait, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I have seven.
Okay, I had six.
So at the region, we had some correspondence about the turf crumb rubber. We had a question from an orthodonto place in Bedford, looking to donate to CCHS, so I've sent that along to the PA president. We had one, two, three comments about our amenities building. We had a note of thanks to Dr. Hunter for all of her work, and we had two emails from the same person on the cell tower on a memo that was sent to the select board that she sent to us. That was it. Nailed it. I miss anything?
You did not.
Oh, I got it, okay. All right, great. So Dr. Hunter does not have any update today, so we're just going to go to the chair's update, and then if anybody else has anything pressing, we can do that. So do you want to start, or do you want me to start?
Doesn't matter, whatever you wish.
I wish, okay. All right, I'll start. I'll start, and then feel free to fill in where I've left off. All right, so we've had a busy month, even with the week of break. The week before break, Alexa and I attended the Concord Select Board meeting, and the Concord FinCon meeting, which also had the Carlisle FinCon present. I also attended the Concord Commission on Disabilities meeting, and the real focus of all of these meetings was the amenities building, which we won't discuss now, because that's coming up later in the agenda. And then over the break, all five Concord School Committee members attended the DEI Commission meeting. And then there was a chair's breakfast over the break that Carrie Rankin and I went to. I did mention at the meeting that we tend to end up on a lot of agendas over the course of a month, and we only liaise to about 10 committees, and of the 55 committees in Concord, we seem to end up on about half. So I put in the request that if we are on somebody's agenda, please let us know, so that we can have representation in a meeting, or just, you know, be there to listen, because not all meetings you can find on the recordings, or they don't get posted in a timely fashion. So I did make that request. And I was also in touch today with Mr. Banfield regarding solar at CCHS, and we had a great discussion, and we're just going to continue to talk about that. We have, we're all under the same understanding, we agreed to all the points at our last meeting. There was question about our motion language, we do not need to make another motion, but we're holding hands with the Solar Task Force. I think that's how I phrased it with Dean, I was like, let's hold hands and put some solar on our roof. So that's, we're both in that same agreement. And then lastly, at CCHS, actually, all the schools are having multicultural celebrations. The one at CCHS is March 5. I know we talked a little bit about maybe having a school committee table, I don't know if anybody's interested in that, if we wanted, any ideas?
No.
No, no ideas? Your interest is.
She's in, she's in.
So we can talk about that offline. Because it doesn't have to be a school committee business, but I think it would be great if we had maybe some representation there. All right, yes, Court.
I'll be there with a student from NINI.
Oh, that's right, that's right, great. All right, and did I leave anything out? Do you have anything on the conference side?
Sure, the only thing that I think was interesting about the two meetings that we sent, that we visited with last week, both the Select Board and the Finance Committee, that's going to be relevant for those of us who are sitting at this table again in the fall, is a recommitment to the process laid out by the Capital Planning Task Force. So as, it's just a good reminder for all of us, as we set our goals in the summer, to keep that top of mind, because I think that all of the committees are going to have a renewed focus on that, and it will dovetail quite nicely, because we will have the results of our facility study at Concord Public School. And again, I think we will continue to talk about planning of our capital at the region. So that was, I think, a really big focus of our discussions, and everyone was in agreement that some focus on that will be necessary as we move forward, so just remember that. We all try to remember it. For those of us who are here, someone will remember to prioritize it in the goals.
Yep. Do we have any other updates from any other committees that people liaise with, that you feel as though we should put on?
I think eventually, we probably will need to have a discussion about taking position on some of the warrant articles, but not tonight, obviously, we don't have it on the agenda, like the solar, like the cell tower, like some of the changes at town meeting, which would impact us.
Okay, so with that, so we can talk about timing. We've never taken positions as a school committee.
Well, some of these, which were mentioned directly.
They do affect the schools, but the school committee has not taken a position.
Yeah, last year, we discussed that.
We talked about that.
Yeah, we talked about that last year, and I thought that there was consensus. I was not part of that consensus, but there was a majority saying that generally that was not our practice, but we can certainly deviate it from it. I don't, I don't remember which meeting it was, but I was seeking to take some positions last year, and on some similar things that intersected with the schools, but I'm in favor of doing that, generally. I think there were some members that were not last year.
And I'll just say, one of the petitions, citizen petition, where we have a vote on every motion from town meeting, so in a sense, it could vote our regional budget down at a town election, which I don't think people could be well-informed, honestly, and that would trigger chaos, in my opinion. We'd have to have a joint town meeting with Carlisle.
That was.
Yeah, you spoke about that last night, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, just things like that. I don't, I don't think it's going to be moved, honestly. I hope petitioner will.
After last night, I'd have.
Yeah.
But to your.
Yeah, go ahead, Court.
Your larger point, many committees weigh in on articles, and we don't have to absent ourselves from that process, especially if it relates to schools and education.
Okay, yeah. So maybe we can get that on our second meeting in March, our last meeting in March, before town meeting, or even April?
I think we have to get through all the hearings.
We got to get through all the hearings, yeah. Okay, great. And just a reminder, the school hearing is on March 7, for those of you that would like to attend that. Anything else? No? No? No one? All right, great. So now, on to the best part of the night. We get to hear from our principals, we get to hear about literacy, and it's going to be great. So I will turn this to Dr. Hunter, to kind of roll how she wants to do it.
Yeah, and Kristen's obviously going to be a big part of this, and then we're going to invite folks up to the table to talk to us. So the goal tonight is to really hit a couple of really important topics, the first being at the early levels of literacy, and making sure we're sharing thoroughly what the work is that we're doing there, and the thinking behind it, and the research behind it. We're going to just brush over CMS tonight, because we just want to highlight their strong MCAS scores. There haven't been big curricular changes there, but we didn't want to leave them out, so we wanted to highlight some positive there in their scores recently. And then Mr. Miller and Ms. Stahl are here to talk further on the embedded English. That was referenced earlier, where we now have two levels in the same classroom, and how we're approaching that, and the outcomes that we're getting as a result. So I think first, and I'll ask Kristen to queue them up, the elementary folks, if you want to come up to the table, that'd be great, and then we'll do introductions.
And you guys can grab the microphone off the stand, bring it to the table.
Yeah, please do share that as you're talking.
Can you sit in the order that you're speaking? Arielle-
So you got to, while they're getting organized, you got a lot of information ahead of this meeting with the goal of you having a chance to look at that. They are not going through any document page by page, they're not going through any slideshow, slide by slide. They're here to talk at a very high level, just so we're framing the context. You saw, I also invited the parent community to use this as an opportunity to hear what we're doing. So we wanted to be sure we at least set the stage that if someone hadn't read all the documents, they had some basics to work off of. And then they're really here to have a dialogue with you. So the, the reading team is going to kick that off, and then the principals are here for questions and answers. I'm going to let you introduce yourselves, if that makes sense, and then you can take it from there.
And I will say, you have to speak into a microphone, because if you don't, then someone will come out and remind you to do it. So if you're speaking, just hold either one of the microphones.
All right, well, it's great to see you all. I'm Arielle Nierenberg. I'm the ELA specialist over at Willard. And I'm going to start off by introducing you to the kind of first couple pages of the document that Dr. Hunter sent out, which covers the skills and structure of our literacy program in kindergarten through third grade. So it seems helpful to start by addressing the term known as the science of reading. There's a nice infographic, a couple pages into the document, that outlines what the science of reading is and isn't. The reason I wanted to start with this is because this is the body of scientific research that forms the basis of our evidence-based approach to teaching literacy here in Concord. The term refers to a large body of research that's gathered from multiple disciplines and fields of study. And it's important to note that it's ever-evolving. As researchers continue to gain greater insight into how young children learn to read, there are new developments and things that teachers can incorporate into their instruction. So the body of research is focused around the five key concepts that the National Reading Panel identified back in 2000 as the pillars of early literacy instruction. They're right in the middle of that infographic and also outlined on the first page, and there's some bullets. And they are phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension. And these are the skills that our reading instruction is focused around. Skilled readers must be proficient in all of these skill areas. So here in Concord, we directly and explicitly teach and provide students in K through three with opportunities to practice in each of these skill areas. There's a shifting emphasis over the years as students evolve in their literacy development. So for example, in kindergarten and first grade, there's more of a focus on phonemic awareness. And then as students become more fluent decoders, they're working more on their reading fluency. So it changes throughout that four-year span, but ultimately, all of those four elements, or five elements, are part of that K through three instruction. And finally, it's important to recognize that the science of reading is not a particular program. It's not something, a curriculum that you can go buy off the shelf, or a one-size-fits-all approach. But rather, it's an evidence base that underlies all of our literacy instructional practices. So that's sort of the idea of the skills that we're focusing on. And then I'm going to talk a little bit too about the structure of our literacy program here in Concord. So in order to address all of those five pillars of early literacy, we've designed a literacy block that's 90 minutes long. Thirty minutes every day of that instruction is the foundations curriculum. And that primarily addresses phonics and phonemic awareness, but it touches on all of the, all of the five skill areas. And then the other 60 minutes is a flexibly designed block that allows for varied instructional contexts. So students might be learning during that time through whole group instruction, they might be learning in strategic and flexible small groups. And they also will spend some time independently practicing and reinforcing the skills that they've been taught. Some of that will be through adaptive technologies such as Lexia or Freckle, and some may be just other, you know, time with actual texts and other materials. So that's the start. Now I'm going to pass it over, sorry, I'm going to pass it over to Katie, who's going to talk about materials.
Awesome, thank you. So I'm Katie Carr. I'm the Language Arts Specialist at Elkhart, and I'm also a resident of Concord. So I have two kids at Elkhart and a three-year-old coming up pretty soon. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the materials that we have at the elementary level. So we're very fortunate to have a wealth of materials that are constantly evolving and adapting to the needs of students. And as Arielle said, the science of reading is constantly evolving, and so we are evolving as well, right? Like, as we think about the materials that are meeting our students' needs. We have a large range of trade books that we use for read alouds that expose students to a wide range of genres, and also complex topics and ideas. And these texts are organized around text sets that really bring the students deep into these topics that they might not otherwise have opportunities to learn about. We also have Lexia, which is our computer adaptive program, which is used in all K to two classrooms. Students, I know my own first grader doesn't particularly like Lexia, but maybe your children have, but it's a really wonderful program. So computer adaptive means that the students take a placement test at the beginning and then it meets them where they are. So as Arielle was saying, in that 60 minutes that we use flexibly, Lexia is a great tool to use where students are meeting, are getting instruction at their level, while teachers are freed up to, to work with small groups. We also have foundations, which is our phonics program that runs K to three. So foundations is really a gold standard phonics program. I'm sure if you've seen in the media, there's a lot of talk about phonics, and, you know, I can really say that I feel really proud that we have this program that is being taught with fidelity in all of our K to three classrooms. So we also have in our K and one classrooms, a relatively new program called Hegarty. And Hegarty is designed to target phonemic awareness. So phonemic awareness is one of the pillars of literacy, and it's an ability to hear and manipulate sounds. And when we think about reading, we are hardwired to listen and to speak, but we are not hardwired to read and to write. So we have to explicitly rewire students' brains in order to do those skills. So oral language is really just a lot of sounds all streamed together. So what we're doing in developing students' phonemic awareness is sensitizing their ears to understand that words are actually comprised of phonemes, which are the smallest units of sound. So we bring our students from larger units of sound, syllables, right, all the way down to the phoneme level. So if you're going to bear with me, I'm going to bring you through a little bit of a Hegarty lesson here. So I might actually have, yeah. So, all right, so if we start, so I do this with, with kindergartners every day. It's like my favorite eight minutes of the day. They're always ready to go. So it's very hands-on and multimodal, which again, research shows is helpful for solidifying skills with students. So we might start by saying, all right, students, get your choppers out. And then the kindergartners would put their hands out like this, you can join me. And we would chop up a multi-syllabic word like cupcake. So I always go reverse direction of the students, so I'm going to go like this, cupcake. And you would say, cupcake. Good job. So a couple days later, a couple weeks later, we would move down to the onset rhyme level. So the onset is the initial sound, and the rhyme is a vowel sound and any subsequent consonants following that. So I might say, all right, students, we're going to do cat. K, at. You say it. K, at. Awesome, you're acing this. So then we're going to bring it down to the phoneme level for our kids. Because really, we don't, we actually start with rhyming, but there's no real function in life for being very proficient in rhyming. We don't go around speaking in rhyming, in rhyme unless we're singers or rapping. But, so by sensitizing, again, their ears, that, that words are comprised of smaller units, that's really where the significance of rhyming has value. So then I would say, chop up the word sift with me. S, eh, p. You do it. S, eh, p. Excellent. So once we bring it down to that phoneme level, that is what students are doing when they're reading, right? They're looking at each sound, s, eh, p, and they're blending the sounds together. And then inversely, because reading and writing have a reciprocal relationship, when we're thinking about writing, we're thinking about the sound, the word in our mind, we're breaking it up into the sounds, and then we're using our sound symbol correspondence to write the letter that represents that sound. So it's, it's really bringing that down to the basic level. And we have some great diagnostic assessments that we use with our upper elementary kids, because oftentimes, we'll see that kids that struggle in those upper grades actually are, have some vulnerabilities in the area of phonemic awareness. So it's like a cornerstone to all that we do. And then it gets really exciting, because we go into medial sounds, where we have the roller coaster. So I would say, do the word nat with me, and you would go, m-n-t. Go ahead, do it. M-n-t. The middle sound is ah. And then the final sound, Ms. Krueger loves this one, so I would say, bag, and you would say, bag. Punch the last sound. Bag. The last sound is g. And then the tricky one, that really stumps them, is manipulation. So this is the highest level of sort of phoneme, phonemic awareness. So I would say, walk. Change w to t. The word is tuck. Good. So yeah, so that's what our kindergartners are doing every day. But it's a lot of fun. Again, this is happening in all of our K one classrooms, so teachers have been going through training. Another really exciting materials-related purchase is a new set of decodable readers for all of our K one classrooms. Again, I'm sure you've read a lot about decodable readers. Decodable readers are different from leveled text in that they offer opportunity for students to apply their knowledge of phonics in a predictable and safe manner. They're learning healthy reading habits, where they're able to apply their knowledge of phonics in the context of a real book. So we're really grateful for that, and that's-
And those are called GOs.
Those are called GOs, yes. So those are aligned with our phonics curriculum.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tara Vinudi, and I am a reading specialist at the Thoreau School. So you may be asking yourselves, why in the world is Tara presenting herself at the school committee meeting wearing a shirt that says, "The Remote Learning Ligers, Thoreau School 2020." So I wore this because I wanted to just talk a little bit about September 2020. In September 2020, I was asked to be a classroom teacher for first and second grade remote students at Thoreau School. This was by far one of the most rewarding years of teaching that I've had in my 24 years as an educator. So why was it such a special year? We became so close as a family of learners. I loved the children, I grew to love their families, their grandmothers, their aunts, and their uncles that also showed up on the screen on some days. But, you know, you just build these relationships and you love these kids. So I say that because my portion this evening will be focused on data. And while I love data, let's be honest, it can run a little dry in formats such as this. So please know that while I will be talking to you about numbers and scores and percentiles, I don't see my students as numbers, scores, and percentiles. None of us here do. I see the students in my care as champions, and I am their ultimate cheerleader. I see them as students with humor, students with emotion, students with incredible artistic ability, students with the desire to explore, to touch, to learn, and to grow. So that's why we're here, because we care about these kids and we want to see them thrive. I will now return you to the regularly scheduled portion of your program, which is the data and the screeners that we use. Brain development, which I'm glad Katie brought up. Research has shown that the most rapidly developing portion in time for the brain is birth to eight years. It's critical for language development and literacy development. So given this, it's important for schools to use universal screening tools in the earliest grades, kindergarten, first, and second, to help identify students who are at potential risk for reading failure. Children at risk for reading failure can reliably be identified as early as kindergarten. Nadine Gabb, an expert in this world, associate professor at Harvard Graduate School of Education, found that deficits in the pillars that we've talked about, phonological awareness, rapid automatic naming, verbal working memory, and letter knowledge, have been shown to be robust precursors of dyslexia in children as young as age three. So having a screening tool that looks at elements such as rapid automatic naming, letter sound awareness, and phonological awareness is key. Why does this matter? Why catch them early? I think we know the answer to that. But brain plasticity decreases through childhood. Maybe you've heard the term, eight is too late. And we want to get kids before that time to decrease the frustration, to decrease the tears, and to make them feel like the champions that I spoke about. The National Institute of Child Health and Human Development has found that it takes four times as long to intervene and remediate a fourth grader as it does a kindergartner. So our job is really important. We have to identify early and intervene early. This is a critical point. One of the screening tools that we use, and I am thrilled that we are using it at all three elementary buildings, is the DIBELS. This stands for the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. The DIBELS is approved by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's supported and recognized by the International Dyslexia Association as a valid and reliable dyslexia screener, and it's cited by Dr. Sally Shaywitz, another expert in the field, as a screening tool that is effective in identifying students at risk for reading challenges such as dyslexia. The DIBELS is given three times a year to all students in kindergarten through third grade. First in the fall, which is generally the end of September, so students can establish routines, get to know their classmates, get to know their teacher. It's given then again in January, and then in late May, early June. The tasks that are on the DIBELS take about one minute each to complete, and there are three or four to do, depending on your grade level. Some of the measures include the pillars that we've talked about, rapid automatic letter naming, a sound segmenting task that examines a child's phonemic awareness, a pseudo-word decoding task to look at a child's letter sound knowledge and their application of phonics to a word that they don't know yet, a reading fluency task, and a reading comprehension task. It is important to point out here that the DIBELS tasks are indicators of a student's overall reading status. They're not intended to be an in-depth look or a comprehensive look at a child's reading ability. Just like you, if you've ever taken a thermometer, you're getting a measure of your general health. Using the DIBELS gives us a general measure of a child's reading health and how they are progressing with their skills. Once students have come and completed the DIBELS, a composite score is calculated. And we are very fortunate, thank you, thank you, thank you, that we're no longer doing all students in K one, two, and three on paper and pencil, and then calculating their composite score at the end. The district has purchased the Amplify system for us, which makes it a much more streamlined system. So the composite score is now thankfully calculated for us. Students are, students in the negligible risk and minimal risk categories are on target to successfully meet their reading benchmarks. Students showing a composite score in the some risk or at-risk category are demonstrating weaknesses with one or potentially more than one of those subtests that we talked about, one or more of the pillars, and would benefit not only from the tier one instruction from their classroom teacher, but additional tier two instruction, either from the classroom teacher, because it can be done in the classroom, or from a specialist such as myself in a small group setting. Oh, while the DIBELS is a very strong indicator, it's not the only tool that we use. We also use the STAR 360. The STAR 360 is a computer-based assessment. All three elementary buildings are using it. It is also given three times a year, but to students in K through five. This takes about 30 minutes to complete, again, depending on the grade level. And as Katie talked about, Lexia, changing according to how students are doing, Lexia also follows that same scope, so that students are challenged, but not too challenged, because it can go back down to items that are a little bit more at their level. You still with me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, the heads are shaking. We're almost there. So once all of the data is collected, we meet in our data team meetings. So this involves gathering together all of the classroom teachers, the school principals, the ELA specialists, and the reading specialists. And we sit and look at the data that we've collected. Who is low in one point of data? Who is low in two? Who's showing at-risk skills, some risk? And we talk about these students. Again, it's not just numbers. These are kids behind the numbers that we're looking at. And we think about how we can best support them, given the areas that they are showing the weakness. MTSS groups are determined and then started. They take place over six, eight, 12 weeks, and then they're looked at again through progress monitoring. How are they closing the gap? What looks good? What still needs work? And then the process of the data team takes place over again. And at that time, we're saying, what students are meeting the benchmarks and do not need to be seen? Which students are making gains and can go back into the tier one, they no longer require the pullout? And then what students are not making gains, despite tier one work in the classroom, despite robust intervention in the tier two system, that might need a deeper look because something's going on, and we need to address that through a formal evaluation through the school. I hope this overview helps paint a clear picture of the dyslexia screeners that we're using, when they're given, and how.
So before we open it up to questions, just a few comments that I want to be sure I share. First of all, you can hear the expertise in the room and who's leading us, and we want to note them and all their colleagues, both the ELA and reading specialists. I think too, it's just really important that we note that we're on a journey here. Five years ago, we had three schools doing three very different things for literacy. And the journey over the last years has been to build a consistent, evidence-based approach. And while we're packaging it really tightly tonight, there's obviously windows of a spectrum here that we're still working with grade levels and teachers on and continuums across the schools. And it's a work in progress. And I think in all my years of elementary literacy, it's a journey that doesn't ever stop. And to the points of the evidence changes and the research changes, children bring us new needs. We have to be in a continual learning mode. A third point is just a huge thank you. You can hear the resources they're referencing. What a gift we have to be able to access such strong, evidence-based resources and match them, not only at an aggregate level, but with an individual level even for needs of kids. And the tools are setting us up to do that now. And, you know, we were still having that conversation too, you know, as we prepared for tonight and talked on what we had for decodables. We had them and we were using them, but we were sharing them. And it became really important in the conversation that we don't want to share those. We want every teacher to have access to the sets that they need. So it's immediate and easily usable with kids who are in emerging reader status. And I think my last point, and this is very, you know, cleanly my messaging to everyone and the parent community, you know, there's a very specific reason Angel Charles is not up here in front of you today. This is the regular education side of literacy and all the work that we do in tier one with interventions, with screenings, with data, that then when students don't progress the way we wish, that's when special education takes over and we look towards identifying individual, right, IEP, individual needs, and maybe naming learning disabilities or dyslexia. So I think that, that's been a really important clarification for me this year, is that we start to sort of break away this overlap that keeps coming up in too casual of a conversation where we conflate dyslexia and evidence-based, and it all becomes one big thing. So that's part of the goals we've had this year, is to bring to the committee and the public sort of our, you know, ways we're peeling, peeling all of that back. So we're really grateful for the opportunity tonight. The principals are here to take any questions. Kristin's here too, obviously.
Yeah, I would just feel free to add. We're not really talking about...
Microphone.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you. We're not really talking tonight about the achievement data, but I presented it before. If you reference Slide 20, both our growth and our achievement data in elementary literacy is quite strong. You can see that we're up in that right-hand area on the grade MCAS scores. So, what we're doing is extremely effective, and it's extremely effective with all subgroups. So, I just want to sort of tip my hat to the folks sitting here and all the classroom teachers who are working so hard at this, particularly after the pandemic. As you know, we all saw the big dip in every area, and this one has bounced back completely and then some. So, hats off and well done.
All right, so I will now open it up for questions, comments, discussion. For, I have a couple of questions and comments, but I'll leave it to other people first.
So, first of all, I want to thank everybody and everybody who's not in the room, because she said that it's such a team effort, and I feel like our kids are so lucky to have people who have such passion for this work because, you know, I could tell you don't see them as a number or as a problem or even as more challenge, right? It's with love that you entered this work. So, I just wanted to know a little bit more. Every day in our MSAC newsletter, we get at least one or two long articles about the science of reading. And there's so many publishers mentioned and so many... So, it's constantly shifting, and there's different opinions, and there's, go back to this thing and that, you know, it's just so confusing. So, it looks like you guys pick things, and again, you feel like they're really the right thing for our kids. And I know you can't be distracted by thinking, oh, no, let's change it this week, and let's change it that week, or maybe... But you are paying attention, obviously. Everybody's paying attention. It's become a national conversation, I think, for good reasons, but it's a bit tricky. And I'm sure you hear things from colleagues in other districts, and it's just very interesting, I think, times that we're in versus maybe 10 years ago when it's, this is what we do. This is how we do it. And so, you know, it's a journey. And I'm sure, you know, you've had to switch up the way you do things, in good ways, right? So, I'd just like to hear a little bit more about that.
Hi, I'm Matt Lucy. I'm the building principal at Willard. And credit goes to the people who are doing the work. Patrick Craven's here as well from Willard. But, you know, with Kristin's oversight, our adoption process is one in which it's very thorough. Vetting, all different research, and making sure it's evidence-based. And you'll also see that, as Lori said earlier, that we've seen the best breed across three buildings, and we come to it humbly. And when someone is doing something well, we learn from them. And when we look to adopt, we adopt fully. And there's a great deal of trust and professional passion that the three that you see in front of you. But it goes throughout the buildings. The staff in all three buildings who are teaching the children desperately love their children, and they want what's best for their children. It's easy to say no. It's easy to rest on your laurels. But what we have fortunately in this district are passionate leaders and passionate supporters who are willing to fund, and our staff who really do a great job and who work to always improve for the benefit of the children.
Court.
I won't belabor what Cynthia said other than to simply repeat very quickly the clear passion that you bring to what you do. Thank you for that. It's nice to not only hear it, but to feel the commitment that you bring. I want to ask a very open-ended question. For school day reading activity, would you talk to us about screen time?
I can do that. If I could just go back to Cynthia really quickly about, you mentioned publishers. And I think you've seen a lot of other districts making a quick move to drop what they're doing and pick up the latest shiny object to the tune of millions of dollars. And I think this speaks to the collaboration and the expertise of these folks and our teachers who are always on the cutting edge, and Kristin and Lori as well, to really focus on and take a look at what's working and, you know, reflect on the research and bring in where we have gaps. We're all learners as well, so just building upon the successes and filling in the gaps as needed. And the screen, the screen time, Court, I'd say, especially at K-1 and 2, we want to make sure that our students are getting in-person instruction, that they're interacting, that they're engaging in those shared read-alouts with their teacher. They're engaging with each other. They're in their, their reading groups, talking, having high-level discussions about complex text. You know, screen time may occur when the teacher, after the whole group lesson, when the teacher takes a small reading group, and that's, again, differentiated based on the needs, the strengths and the needs of each individual child. The other students may be going through reading stations. And one of those stations may be something that the folks earlier had mentioned, which is Lexia, which is a strong evidence-based program, which, again, meets the students where they are. That accompanied with freckle for a short amount of time to meet their needs and reinforce the skills that their teachers taught them.
We've been committed to Lexia for quite a while now.
We have. Yeah, the expansion is the difference. We were using it with far fewer students, and now we're offering it to the aggregate.
Actually, the funny story about that is we've used it. It used to be based here in Concord. It was created in Concord. So, we've used it for my whole time here for 11 years. And literally two weeks, so maybe March 1st, 2020, I asked the rep in because the scores that we were getting from Lexia were so fantastic that I thought, and we were using it with just kids who were struggling in reading, that I thought, why not generalize this? Like, because it's so differentiated to particular kids' needs. So, you know, you all know where that went. Flash forward two weeks, and we got Lexia for free for all of our students. So, it was great because that was already the path that we were on just because we were getting great results. So, that is why we use it here. But that being said, Justin, would you say maybe, probably not more than 20 minutes? Maybe not even, yeah, 10 minutes a day?
10, 15, 20 minutes.
And it was really a centerpiece of our summer school, too.
And it still is, yep.
Thank you.
Alexa.
Sure. I just want to say, since I arrived on this committee, literacy has been, as superintendent knows, something that I have been very keen to learn more and more and more and more about. And no matter how much information I get, there always seems to be something more that I seek to learn about how we are managing literacy and specifically at this age level. And this evening, I feel like we, you all really got the assignment. This has probably been, and we've been hearing about literacy in our, in our past presentations have been excellent, but this, to me, has finally synthesized all of the information that certainly I've been looking for and in conversations with my colleagues, I think we have all been looking for. So, I so, so, so appreciate that. And the particular amounts of detail that you got into really, really have helped me feel confident about the path that we are taking. So, that is great. I looked at one of the presentations, I think, that Kristin popped by, and I'm just so curious about one thing. So, you know, certainly when we look at STAR data, or actually, I think it was MCAS data at the elementary level, you know, we obviously, no district, I don't think, has everyone meeting or exceeding expectations. So, I understand that that is an unrealistic expectation. But generally, and I don't even, I'm not even necessarily curious about our district, but in general, what are, what are sort of the goals that districts set? Again, I don't want to necessarily talk about Concord and highlight our data, but I'm curious, like, what is a realistic expectation of how many kids in any given year can meet or exceed expectations? And do any districts out there ever, like, succeed in any real way?
Yeah, I mean, I can answer that unless...
Yeah, I think it's for, well, it's for anyone, I guess.
I mean, I promise the principals they'd all speak.
Naomi, try it. Make it worth your while, Naomi, you're here.
So, your specific question, what's a reasonable goal to set for kids not meeting? Like, obviously, we want all of our students to meet the standard. I think when we, when we have students who aren't meeting the benchmark, we, it stops being like, what's the goal for the whole district? But what's the individual goal for that student?
Perfect.
And so, we really focus on growth. And I think one of the really great benefits to the tools that we're using now, DIBELS and STAR, is that they're, they really let us measure growth. And so, with DIBELS, you get your students' baseline data. And if they are not meeting the benchmark, then you set what would be considered ambitious goal for them. So, if they're, you know, if they are not, if they're not, if their decoding subscore is not where we would want, we set an ambitious goal for them, and that's what we're aiming for. And if we don't reach that, then we look and we readjust and we see what to do differently. So, I think the best way to answer that is to say it's just very individual in that case.
No, that makes sense.
But, I mean, Kristin, if you want to try to tackle what a reasonable...
That's enough for me. I get that, and I appreciate you drilling it down to that level of, like, individual attention. My, I had one other question. So, it, in the time that I've focused on it, it seems like we have a really solid, like, aggregate group of curricular tools that we use. And I know, you know, from my seat, sometimes they're expensive, and I know we're investing. And even just like the optics of the classrooms not sharing the decodables and the ease for, it shows that our investment and our value that we're placing on that. And I just was curious, do you, does it feel like you are all properly, like, supported in that? And, and I guess, too, like, do you all continue to evaluate other tools that might pop up as the years go by? And how does that work? Do you guys bring them to Kristin? Does Kristin bring them to you? I just, as we, because, you know, something in the presentation that particularly resonated with me is that, like all science, this continues to evolve, right? You know, we've all lived through COVID. I think we can all, we all feel that in a real way. So, as this evolves, how do you guys sort of speak and manage and work it all out? And can I, can I be assured that you will always let us know? Because so much of our job is financial, that you might need something.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. The first, I tried to put it in the report to answer your questions, but we're just so thankful for the support that we receive from the community and particularly from the school committee. We really do have everything that we need to put on the highest-quality program. And then to answer your second question, we have a continuous cycle review of committees that I've talked about before to evaluate new products. And I love how Justin said it. You know, it's usually a two-year process for us. When we went with a new elementary math program, it was actually a three-year process for us. So, it's super careful vetting of both what's called evidence-based and what's also called research-based. One is when you're looking at the data that exists out in the world. And then the other is, how does it do in Concord? So, we actually do want to do those pilot tests and make sure it works. One of the conflicts that I'll bring up with the reading work that we've done is a lot of these big shiny objects, I think you called it, like when, like the district I live in, Newton, just went out and bought $2 million worth of decodable texts. And often, those programs are in conflict with one of our other goals, which is to have more diverse texts so that more types of students see themselves in what they read and are more engaged. So, that's, that's something that would have come up through a very careful vetting process. You know, and now there's lots of research articles on that. And I know some districts are regretting their decision to spend so much money on something. So, you know, with these folks who've been on literally countless committees through the years, we really take a solid look at everything that we're adapting. And then the last point is, you know, if there was one area, tonight is focused on reading, but the actual literacy area that we are looking at very in deeply because of our own data is writing. So, that's where I see sort of the next piece.
Love that.
Yeah, so, you know, just to give you a sense, we have been piloting for three years, for three years at the middle school, No Write Inc., which is a quick rate.
I like that.
Yeah, it's, it's great. So, kids write, they get feedback on their writing, and they are doing it right now every day. So, that's fantastic.
Great. Carrie.
Yep. Just to echo what everyone else has said, thank you. You guys bring so much joy and passion to, like, to this room. I can only imagine what it's like in a room full of kids where there's so much energy. So, thank you. I think Tara, you said that our job is really important. I think it's actually the most important without reading. There it really is, it is the foundation for all other learning. So, what you do really is not just important, but so critical. So, thank you to all of you for your expertise and opinions and thoughts and heart that you're putting into this. I had just a couple of questions. One, I know this is a general ed conversation, but I just have a lot of conversations as the CPAC liaises on with CPAC. And I know this is a particularly important, sensitive topic for CPAC. And I, I'm just curious, in this, in these conversations, the one thing I haven't heard much about is, and this isn't even about CPAC, but just generally, but what I haven't heard much about is about the role of families and whether it's, you know, finding that students are not doing well and you're reaching out to families or, you know, there's, the data is saying one thing. Families are seeing something totally different. I'm curious if you can just kind of speak to, or Kristin, if you can just speak to kind of the involvement of families in this. K-2, there's so little, yeah.
I can speak to that. So, yes. I think that partnering with families in this is so critical. And I think, just to highlight one example that I think speaks to this. So, the state requires that we communicate with anyone who is flagged as being at risk on DIBELS. And collectively, and this is not just the curriculum coordinators, this is what faculty believed, felt really strongly that we should, if we're doing DIBELS as a screener, that we should be sharing that data with everyone. And so, that is, that's something that we're doing. And as a district, it's sort of above and beyond what the state requires in all of this. But I share it as an example because I think it should, like, staff believe that that's what needs to happen. So, this is data that is being shared for all students K-2, regardless of whether, you know, where they fall in terms of being at risk or not at risk. And that happens three times a year. That's, and that's just with DIBELS as an example. That's the tool that we're talking about in this session. But yes, I think it's critical, and staff really feel that it's critical as well.
And what happened, like, how do you approach, you know, obviously, in any, like, you, I think you guys acknowledged that any assessment is not going to be perfect, that it's, it's a, it's a tool. How do you approach those incidents where kids kind of fall through the cracks or families are flagging things? Like, how do you kind of think about those conversations?
So, our hope, and this is, you know, we, when I started five years ago, we did not use DIBELS universally across all three schools. I am really confident that using this with, you know, using this as a universal screener combined with STAR, we're not, the, the kids are not falling through the cracks because the assessment is really robust. There may be a different, like, there certainly are going to be situations where what we recommend as an approach for supporting a student might be different than what a family needs. And we can engage in that conversation and sort of work together to figure out what to do to support a kid. But just in the two years that we've been using this tool, I, we're not, kids aren't, kids aren't falling through, we're catching kids.
That's great, that's great. I mean, that's the goal. Thank you.
Okay, on to me.
So, Tracy, did you want to go last?
Oh, I can go, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Mine's, I know Carrie said, right, we're talking about general ed. But I do have a question about Tier 3. So, as a kid who is dyslexic and, or is and has one that's dyslexic, and we're in small towns, are, and I know nowadays, I still have PTSD, but from my own stuff, and so that's what's in my head of how I was treated. Are the, do you ever have times, like, I was the only kid, so I was in a room alone. I just want to know that doesn't happen here. That kids who are at a level that, you know, that are at Tier 3, that really are... That kids who are at a level that, you know, that are at tier three, that really aren't getting it, that need a lot of work. But are they still, even if you have to be taken out for a little while, are they in with other kids? Is my, if that, which, I just saw your face, but that, like, I'm assuming yes, but I, like I said, like, I was alone in a room, because I was the only kid that they whatever'd so, and that's, uh, you know. I know that's changed. It's been many, many years since I was in school, but.
That's a great question, Carrie. And, um, just to echo what Naomi said, we have multiple points of data, the STAR, the, the DIBELS, MCAS data, of course, and the, and the teachers' assessments that they're doing anecdotally and, um, one-on-one on a very regular basis, weekly sometimes. Um, teachers are very good about catching these things, um, and consulting with our reading specialist. So it's like a revolving door on most days. Um, so they're checking in, and they're, they're very adept at catching, um, skill deficits. And if they don't, as Tara said, the, these, during these data team meetings, the team catches them, or Tara will catch them. And we make sure, a lot of the time, starting in kindergarten and at the beginning of the year, we catch these, these issues and make sure that they're then referred to what's called a child study process, that I think was referenced before. And then that's a larger group of people looking at all of the strengths of the child first. And then where we're falling down, where those, where that breakdown is. And from there, it might be an in-class intervention at the, at the, you know, at tier one, tier two level. Or it might be that it's, it's pretty glaring, this child needs something extra, right? So we have a conversation about, um, you know, moving that child on and getting them what they need. Um, and if it does go to a referral and an, and IEP, um, to meet the needs of that, of that child, it's again, based on the unique needs of, of that child. It could be that, um, that child does best, uh, in the classroom, right? And that special education teacher is partnering with a regular education teacher to provide them the, the support and services they need. Or it might be that it's a small pull-out group. We have these wonderful tutorials that exist between two buildings, uh, between two, uh, classroom spaces, and they can pull a small group, um, with that child, um, who has similar needs to other, um, kids. Or it's a heterogeneous, uh, group, where that, the, the, your neurotypical child is working alongside and in tandem with, um, a student with a reading disability. Um, and there are times also where, where that, that, the tier three intervention, like a Wilson or OG, that requires that one-on-one, really intensive, um, everyday sort of instruction as well. So it's really based on the needs of the individual children.
And I don't know, this might not be the appropriate question for you guys, maybe for you, the, um, just the whole, I know, like, you guys are elementary, and then there's middle schooling, but to me, it all flows. If, you know, not to say, not the best of words, but like, if you guys mess up in elementary, the kids are a little messed up in middle school. Um.
We try not to do that.
We can't argue with you, Carrie.
Do you, so, like, right, we are learning a lot of new things, and like, it, like, I, I never, I didn't learn phonics as a kid. So with these, you're saying you're doing these new things. What about your kids who are in fifth grade now, who didn't get that in first grade, in kindergarten? Are you guys, is the middle school, like, we, I know in Carlisle, we did, um, one of, one of our fifth grade teachers, it's been quite a few years, but the PTO, we gave them money for, um, picture books in fifth grade. And people were like, why? And she's like, I still have some kids who are struggling, and the picture books help them with writing. And she, now she uses it for all the kids, just because the ki, like, even in fifth grade, kids like pictures, and it helps them with the writing. Um, so I'm just wondering, it, do you guys have a?
Yeah.
Assuming you are, but you, you know, you got to ask to make sure that you have a plan for the kids who aren't getting the new best thing, who didn't get the Lexia, who didn't get the whatever, who may, you know? Is there a plan in middle school for those kids?
Yeah, I'll just mention a couple of things. So the, uh, law about the dyslexia screener just went into effect. So there certainly are students in, um, third, fourth, and fifth, I would say, who wouldn't have been screened as like a kind gardener or a first grader using the DIBELS tool, unless the MTSS process highlighted them. So, um, if a, a child was falling behind any benchmark, a teacher brought them up to the teacher assistance team or whatever happens, they were already, um, with, even without the dyslexia screener, there was already a system in place to catch kids. Um, that being said, the data teams that you heard about today extend all the way through. So if a kid is showing those signs, we, these guys can pull the child, assess them, um, and work with them. And that's what they do. That's their literally 100% job, um, is to pull kids and work with them if they're at, at all, uh, behind. Um, and one thing that we've found that's been extremely, um, effective is these 12-week, you know, six, eight, 10, 12-week interventions, because it's usually like, one thing that is happening, and then you sort of, everyone said, oh, I broke the code today. You know, I saw my kid break the code, and, and that's what happens. And that actually continues all the way through. So we have the same system at middle school and then high school as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. But there certainly are kids who, this part, wouldn't have.
That's one reason why we committed to STAR all the way up through high school, was to be sure that we had a screener that would flag any students who needed support.
I wanted to add to that. So we have STAR and DIBELS, which serve as.
Microphone, sorry.
Um, so we have STAR and DIBELS, which serve as our screener, but we also have multiple layers of assessment. So from there, students that are flagged on our screeners, we then have a variety of diagnostic assessments that we perform to sort of test to failure and find where their, their level of, um, most vulnerability is. And that can happen K to 12. So like, we were doing phonemic awareness earlier, we could have 10th graders that are struggling with phonemic awareness, and the diagnostic assessments would help us figure out how and where to target instruction.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so before we close up, thank you so much for coming. This is really great. I love literacy. You know, my background is in reading. I, I'm a Wilson teacher, and I love Wilson. So when you're doing all this, I'm like, oh, it brings you back to tapping. I love it all. So, and those who know, who know, right? If you know, you know. Um, but anyway, what I see tonight is just the collaboration amongst the professionals in this room, and I think that that is one of the keys to like, our great education that we have in Concord, is that I can see the three of you. You clearly talk to each other. You all speak the same language. You're all working together across all the schools. And one thing that I think has really changed, um, you know, my kids haven't been in elementary school for a while, but it's really amongst all three schools, the same thing is happening in all three schools. And, you know, determining all the data that you're using, having those data meetings, doing the progress monitoring is so critical for kids, to get them placed properly and to really do the proper reading instruction for each individual child. It's a ton of work. It does not go unrecognized. And I think that, you know, as kids get older, they go to middle school, they go to high school, sometimes we forget about our elementary schools. And like, all that important work happens. You guys are the foundation for really everything. And their reading foundation is important. It then affects their writing. So really, the work that you've done and just coming to us and having this conversation was really important for us to have, because we do want you front and center, and we want you front and center teaching our kids reading and just being the face of literacy in the district. So I really want to thank all of you for that. I just had one question, and it's just post-COVID. I think about kids, if you were in kindergarten in 2020, or in first grade in 2020, second grade, what does it look like now? Like, how are those kids doing? I know it's a tough question. I know it's like, you know, I mean, obviously, we're all individuals, but if you want to just, I just want to know, how are they doing in reading?
Go ahead, Tara.
Having been a remote classroom teacher in 2020, I can speak to this. I think one of the biggest things, so, yes, I'm reading specialist and all of that, but kids needed socialization and language and talk. What did you do this weekend? What did you do? Language is the base of everything. So if we don't have language, we're not going to understand the books that you're reading to me, teacher, and I might not understand the book that I'm reading myself. So for, for me to see kids engaging in conversations with each other, engaging in conversations in responsive classroom, that's been a game changer, um, because they're just learning how to talk to each other, so then they can learn how to talk about books. So that's sort of a change I've seen. Um, I think some kids were coming in, they just didn't know the routine. Whether, they were young, and it happened to them in first grade, so then they're coming back funkily in second grade. Thank goodness we did it the way we did it, but it was funky. Um, their desks were separate. They weren't together, so teachers couldn't do the together activities as well. They did them, but it wasn't as robust as it is now. Um, so I think that's just scratching the surface of your question, but as someone who's sort of on the ground in K one and two classrooms, like, those have been two big differences that I've noticed.
Well, bringing it back to a lot of the data discussions that we've been having, I think the nice thing is that, like, I'm not worried that there's kids falling through the cracks at third, fourth, and fifth grade, because as we've mentioned a couple of times, we're still continuing to screen and support through the MTSS process, kids as they get into those older grades. So, um, I feel confident about that.
Yeah.
And I think I just want to, Carrie, you made a really nice point earlier about how it could be, you could feel isolated receiving the support. And I think what you've heard tonight was the, the backbone of data, but always leading with affection and care. So in all our buildings, uh, maybe when we were younger, when we were asked to leave the room, um, we didn't feel good about it. Now it's called being borrowed. And the students want to be borrowed. They yearn to be borrowed, right? If their friend's going, they want to go with them. And it's the success that students are having when they're being borrowed, and it's the information that we're sharing with their parents about the progress monitoring, about by being borrowed, they're now having, um, uh, growth in this manner. It's all those bits that come together because of the excellence in, in, in our leadership and the support that you're providing. But it's, the, the proof's in the pudding, that we're having students having greater success because of what we're doing.
That's great. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. And keep up the good work. Bring everything back to your schools and like, you know, your classroom teachers too. I mean, they're part of this team too. And we certainly recognize that, you know, you're all part of that work, so thank you.
Everybody in the building.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
And it, while you're just moving around, um, we do have a couple of people with hands up online, but I just want to reiterate that our public comment period is at the beginning of our meeting, but we do have an opportunity on March 20th, there's a CPAC meeting at 7:00 PM, which will be much of the same discussion, and it will be more interactive. But because this is a school committee meeting, we're not interactive at this point in our meeting. All right. Thank you. And now, we've done elementary school. We're moving on to middle school.
Yeah, we were going to just pivot quickly to share some middle school data, um, because, because of the success there, which I think we've touched on a little bit through the conversation so far, but we, we didn't want to not mention middle school while we were having a literacy conversation.
They're fabulous, yes. Uh, so slides 26 and 27 of the data show that we've had, um, enjoyed both high growth and high achievement in our middle school. Um, that being said, we, um, are always looking for improvement. So, uh, I mentioned before, we're working on, um, students' writing. And so in the research on writing, the two areas that we want to focus on, um, that has been shown to do in big improvements in writing, is that you write often, so daily, and you write, um, and get feedback on your writing. And pretty, um, immediate feedback. So that's why we're using this program, No Write Inc. We, they, students do a program, uh, in No Write Inc. called Quick Writes. So they sit down, five minutes, boom, 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 and you get immediate feedback on that. So what we're focused on is both, um, production.
What, what do you mean immediate? Like, with an AI person?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
It used to be, I think 10 years ago, the product, maybe even, uh, it used to be actual people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Shoving you feedback.
Oh, that's a while.
Actual people.
Yeah, yeah. So now, so you can get immediate feedback. Um, and we're really working in that sphere on, um, students' use of grammar, proper grammar, because if you look at our scores, that's the one area that's relatively lower than the other areas. So I would say that's probably the big focus. We are also working on, um, using the data from, um, the STAR with Freckle, which is a piece of software, also looking specifically at reading at the middle school, and we also use it at high school. Um, and then the last thing to mention about the middle school is, um, there's a big, uh, we'll talk about this on April 9th, but the, um, emphasis on socio-emotional skills. So what we've done, what the, uh, middle school, uh, English staff has done, is to look at teaching social skills through literature. So there's a lot of groups that help us with this. So, um, there's a whole unit on empathy, there's a whole unit on motivation, there's a whole unit on making friends. Um, and, um, in the eighth grade, what you might have known back in the day as the Facing History Unit on the Holocaust, is now a Holocaust Literature Circles. Um, so survivors of the Holocaust, accounts of the Holocaust, um, done for, how do you stand up to bullies? How, how, what does it look like in, uh, terms of genocide? So all of those, um, aspects of SEL learning are also really being, um, inculcated in each year of the middle school English program.
Great.
That's English.
Great. More to come on all of this stuff that you just mentioned. Shall we invite?
Yes. Mr. Miller, Ms. Dahl can come join us. And I, I actually love that tonight's meeting, we're really going like K all the way through 12, so.
So I'll just queue up while they get ready.
Yeah.
I think important to note is that when we talk about embedded English, I think some of what we need to clarify tonight are the semantics. We did not de-level English. What we've done is take our very small population of students who are in the college prep courses and integrate them into the honors courses. And for us, that means, it was less than 20% of the population in college prep. Over 80% of the population was in honors. So we've, there, you're going to hear them talk a lot about teaching up. We certainly are still teaching the honors curriculum. The difference is what we're doing to support the other kids who might not have had access to it before. So I'm going to let them go take that in more depth. Um, they are going to skim through the slides they put together, just so we make sure to hit all the, um, background information for the, any parents that are watching, and then we can have a dialogue.
Okay, I think we are good.
Hey. You basically just said our first one.
Yeah, that was perfect. Thank you.
I'm used to my life.
I think it's on.
I think it's good.
Okay. Um, thank you for that, Lori. Um, and so, so our approach, um, right, so students who requested honors in regular level English classes, um, are in the same room now. Just to point out, um, students have always had choice in their level at the high school. They choose their level in English. Um, it's not recommended by teachers, and that has remained the same. And teachers are really focusing on using a differentiated approach, um, on how to meet the needs of all their students in their classroom. Um, so we're doing this by, obviously, as, as always, having high expectations with high support. Um, this change has led us to having smaller class sizes, which in turn, um, gives teachers more opportunity to reach more students in terms of giving more direct and explicit feedback around the writing process, or to work with students around various skills. Um, more students for, more opportunities for students to learn from each other. More students for, more opportunities for students to learn from each other, you know, more individualized support for students on IEPs or 504s, and greater access to course selection for students because now we have more sections of English. So students have more flexibility within their schedule with embedded leveling classes. This model also addresses equity issues created by separate classes for different levels. And we were consistently seeing that our subgroups were disproportionately represented in the regular English classes. So Brian's going to talk about some data now.
So one thing that we really want to make clear is this isn't a huge, there's an average of two to three students in the standard level in each class, right? This isn't 50/50. This isn't even 60/40. It's not 70/30, right? This is a couple of students who are choosing to take standard level in each class. So there, our teachers are continuing to teach the exact same curriculum, and we're looking to raise the bar for all students. The next few slides look at students who were taking standard level last year with students who are taking the standard level this year. And overall, by year of graduation, you'll see that, these are based on individual students. So students in year of graduation 2024, right, their quarter two grade went up about four percentage points from last year Q2 to this year Q2. If we look into some subgroups here, we'll see that for our non-white students, forgive the terminology, it's the best we get from Aspen, like there's Caucasian and then there's all other race listed in Aspen. Right, their, their percentage point increase has almost four, almost five percentage points, which is really remarkable. And similarly, if we look for special education students, they've had a significant increase based from quarter two to quarter three this year. So the key takeaway from that data is that our most struggling students have continued to benefit. And I want to point out that this is the data we're showing about the most struggling students. We absolutely continue to look at the data and the performance of our students who are enrolled in the honors courses. And they're continuing to perform exceedingly well as they have throughout their time in Concord.
I have my own mic.
I'm so used to sharing with you.
Right. So I do, I just want to highlight that point. I mean, our honors level students are continuing to perform at high levels as they have historically. So this year, one thing that we're doing is for our PD paths, Kristin leads, we have our English teachers in their own PD path, which has been great. It's given them more time to work together. And it is co-led by Alex Spence and Kate Richmond. Alex Spence is one of our English teachers who's been teaching an embedded English class. That is probably one of the most popular English classes at CCHS, Twice Told Tales, for almost 10 years. So he has a lot of expertise in teaching a very successful embedded English class at CCHS. So Dr. Green, our assistant principal, and I have been working with Kate and, Kate and Alex to support their, to support their PD path this year. We, Kate, Alex, myself, and a few other teachers, attended a Carol Ann Tomlinson Professional Development. She's one of the gurus in differentiated instruction, Teaching Up for Excellence. And it's really about thinking about how teachers think and not necessarily what they do. So thinking about really planning your curriculum that engages, challenges, stretches, and also supports all of the learners in your classroom.
Yeah, I guess I just want to chime in one thing there is both on all ends of the spectrum, right? So that you're stretching students who are doing really well and maybe are a little ahead and, and offering support for students who are struggling. They, we want to make sure that that's happening on both for all of our students.
And I think oftentimes when people think of differentiation, they just think of it as like certain practices. And it's really about a mindset in how you actually teach all students, whether you're extending them, pushing them, or supporting. It's based on their needs. Some of the other benefits that we've had this year as an English department or a department has had is more time to collaborate because of our new schedule. We have several more early release times this year where teachers have had time, more time, to collaborate, share best practices, and really be able to put together their resources and look at lessons and look at data together. Again, so I think when you walk through our classrooms, our English classes, you will see learners who are engaged. You'll see students who are giving, who are given the choice to, voice and choice is a big thing. So really thinking about how can we give students choice in terms of their writing, in terms of their writing outcomes or their writing tasks? How can we elevate their voices in classroom discussions? And these are a lot of the things that you would see in a differentiated classroom at CC right now. We just included, I can't see this because my eyes are really bad, which is why I have paper in front of me. But we had just included a couple of examples of lesson plans, or excuse me, of writing assignments around, in an embedded classroom. So for example, this English Crucible essay, you see there's option one and option two. Students have a choice of what they're writing. A student who is in honors may be asked to include three quotes and analyze, and citation, and analyze them. A student in non-honors may have to find one or two quotes. There will, there are also graphic organizers for students if they need them. Graphic organizers is just a great way for students to organize their thinking before they write. And that's something that benefits all students. And within an embedded classroom, that's a tool that's there for students who need it. And if students don't need it, they don't have to use it. But it's a tool that is a best practice and is there for all students. And lastly, this is an example, oh, did you want to talk about this one? This is an example of a rubric. So you can just see there's the project requirements for research for an honors level student and a non-honors level student. And in terms of looking at rhetorical devices, there's the honors level and the non-honors level, which are differentiated based on which level the student is in.
And for anyone at home, these are all attached to our agenda. So if we're, even if you're in the room, if we're going through too quickly, you can go back and look at some of these assignments on the agenda.
Yeah, and we just ended with a few quotes from all, from great teachers in grades nine, 10, and 11 about their experiences. So teachers saying they're delighted with the embedding, all of my students are thriving. All the students are doing work at their own level with the appropriate support. They all have, they're doing the same curriculum. And I've been able to show that some students that they can do the honors work because they're there in the same class. So that's sort of where we just wanted to take off as the sort of launch point. And then we can answer any questions or clarify anything else that might be useful.
And I think we were looking to have more of like a conversation around this. So if anybody wants to jump in, if you have any questions, any comments, any thoughts, I think Carrie's coming in.
Process question. So you, can you, microphone. Oh, sorry. Can you, you know, on one assignment, choose the honors and on another assignment, choose the non-honors? Like, can you jump between the two or you have to choose a path?
You choose a path.
At the beginning of the year.
At the beginning of the year, because that's the course you've enrolled in. It's not to say like you could never change courses.
There is room for growth and movement.
Kids change courses, but like.
Part of the point is that you want to be able to grow, but it's not assignment based.
Correct. No, like.
Middle school, you can opt in and out of different levels.
No, like if you chose honors, you're doing honors.
And, and that goes both ways too, right? The movement. I mean, if a student feels that they need, that they want to do standard or regular, that's also an option. It's not just about moving up.
Even like to that end, like, much like, like in Latin class. So if, if you are taking your regular level English class and your teacher notices like, you know what, I think you actually should push yourself and go to the honors. You can actually switch to the honors level probably at some point.
Yeah, beginning of the, exactly.
And that has happened.
Exactly what happens in Latin, right? If we talk about what in Latin one, kids actually don't even choose a level till a little wise in because they haven't, they've never taken Latin before. How do you choose a level of a course you've never, but this is.
Shows up on your transcript as a withdrawal that happened with.
They changed from one.
That he withdrew from Latin and.
Moved into honors.
Honors.
So Carrie's correct about the difference between middle school and high school. And it has to do with in the middle school, we don't have weighted grade point averages.
No, yeah, I just, I just wanted to understand the process.
But it might help if you explain that there's still a difference in terms of the grade point averages.
Yeah, right. So if you enroll in honors, you still have honors GPA credit. And you're, you're asked to demonstrate a greater, on your assessments, right? We showed one little example, right? It's a bit more challenging. You need to be more thoughtful. And I think that we also just want to be clear, like, kids are making a choice sometimes, even if they could do honors, they're choosing to do standard because they want to push themselves in another discipline or different department. So that's happening as well.
I think one other thing to note is just the framework in terms of honors and non-honors has always been consistent in that the expectations have been the same in terms of how many books they should be reading, how many writing assignments they should be doing per term. That's the same and always has been. It's just that the path that they take to get there might look a little different for some, for each student.
And I think it's your, when you talked about 80% of our kids were already taking honors.
Yeah, probably more, like 88%.
So it was more like 88%? I know we're not supposed to talk about any other subjects, but it's like, say in math and social studies, it's not 80% in an honors level class, correct?
Not even close.
Okay. Would you say like 50-ish or less? Just off the top of your head, and I'm not going to hold you to this.
I could tell you ninth grade science is like 60/40.
Okay, so.
So it's, it's.
Okay.
60 honors, 40 or opposite?
Ah, yeah, honors.
Court, yep.
There was a comment earlier this evening about the idea that we were all in on embedded English. And what you're telling us is not so much that students elect what they'll take. And CP students can elect into an honors course, if I understand. Is a potential unintended consequence that you're watchful about that there might be a stigma to then not take the honors if in fact the opportunity suddenly is available to you?
So I've talked to some of the teachers about that, just in, do you mean like in terms of how it's, you know, put out there? That this is, the honors are non-honors. So.
And how it, how it's perceived by, I won't say all students. You can't generalize too much, but.
I think, I, I would say, and you know, I don't want to speak for all of our teachers, but that some of the teachers that I did speak to or I had conversations with about that, I think, you know, in the beginning for some of them, for the teachers, it felt a little bit scary, but for the students, they didn't think that it did. It felt like they were just choosing, again, like in so many classes, you are given choice in terms of, you know, what, what assignment you're going to do or what your writing topic is going to be. That's just, that's just good practice. So I think it was more, I think the teachers were more fearful about that than the students actually were.
And perhaps just a rhetorical question, the answer might be simple, I don't know. Do you need any additional assessment tools to monitor the outcomes of the embedded process?
I mean, we'll continue to use our grade data. That's what we have available right now. But our students will continue to take STAR. They'll continue to take MCAS. While we don't have AP English, right? Some students take AP English. We'll continue to measure all of our metrics using our standard data. I don't see a need right now for any additional assessment.
Okay. And lastly, this being the first year, there'll be, probably be a leading question, a rigorous first year assessment that we'll hear about. Is that safe to say?
Yeah, I think we'll definitely keep, we're reflective leaders and we certainly want to continue to reflect with our staff. Halfway through or a little, maybe three quarters of the way through, it feels like it's working quite well for nearly all of our students. But certainly we'll look at the end of the day, end of the year and make sure that it continued, it has continued to work throughout June.
Yep, Carrie?
I just want to follow up on Court's. When you, if 88% of students were already choosing honors, have you seen that number grow this year with like, does, how did this change impact students' decision-making?
Well, I guess we'd need to talk more about next year, right? Then like this year, I, I could tell you roughly how many kids moved, took standard last year to take honors this year. But I didn't, I'm not exactly sure how many, how did that compare to previous years?
Yeah.
I think that Tracy's point about kids having more fluidity in their schedule, maybe that did allow more students to take honors. More moved up to honors. You know, I'm not exactly sure what, how exactly that will pan out for next year as kids are just still finalizing their course requests.
Completely off topic, but since you're here, what kinds of, and how often do you discuss AI and the impact to the classroom?
That is a hot topic.
That is a hot one.
Probably not enough as people want to be.
Kristin just sent us, Kristin just sent us a lovely graphic at the end of last week or maybe this week. I've lost track of where we are in the week. So yes, we are certainly talking about AI. Terry Smoka, our instructional technology specialist, has really tuned into this work with a group of tech leaders. And we've worked on our sort of thoughts in leadership team as well, right? Whereas it's emerging every day. And every day there's a new.
And changing every day.
Expectation. And I mean, I think our experience is, is that if you can show students the meaning and the why behind assignment and that it's personally meaningful for them, they're not going to, they want to do the work. Like our kids are by and large amazing students. They want to learn. They want to do the reading. And they're not looking for some robot to do it for them.
And most of the pedagogy we're seeing come out is about using it as a tool. Because you still have to be a critical thinker.
Right. I mean, yes.
I mean, or like, right, a teacher puts an example, like sometimes the AI will tell you that here's a quote from a book, and the quote is actually not in the book, right? They just can be wrong sometimes.
Yeah, and you know, if you're engaging in a Socratic seminar and, you know, those critical thinking skills and on the spot, I mean, they have to, those are skills that they have to learn, right? And that they have to practice in vivo.
And as Thomas Jefferson said, trust but verify, we do have AI detection software.
Yes.
Sure we'll have more.
Yeah, you, you certainly will. And yes, as Brian said, we're definitely talking about it at the leadership team level. And it's something that the English department is also very eager to talk about when they can, I would say.
Thank you.
I just had, one, I was just wondering, did you have a lot of pushback from anybody, parents, when this rolled out?
Last spring, we definitely heard from some parents for sure. This year, we've had remarkably, I, I actually don't think I, I can speak for. I have not received one.
Not regarding embedded.
Email about an English class regarding like the impact of embedded honors.
I just know how big, you know, literacy in general from elementary has been a hot topic.
Yep.
And I know it's been talked about. I just, personally, I want to say thank you because I, I only can speak from the people I know from Carlisle that there was some like, to me, it was more, oh, my God, you're going to put your kid in with my honors kid? That sort of a thing. And, or is always my honors kid going to be challenged enough? And the way I see it is that the kids who are, right, opting to do the standard, and even though they don't, might not have to do the same amount of work as the honors kids, they're still in the class getting the same information. Where when you said about like the court about the kids being, you know, not being honors, that was way more evident when you weren't in an honors class.
Correct.
Because all the standard kids were here and all the honors kids were here. Now you're all together. So even if you're not doing all the work, you're, and even if you're that kid who's not doing any work, you're, it's going to get in there because you're going to hear it. And you're going to hear the other kids discussing in a way that you wouldn't hear in a, you know, like I, my, I was like, what are you talking about? Socratic seminars? What is that? Because we, we never had that. So I'm like, oh, you guys do that? Like, so you get to hear from the other kids. So.
Which is one of the great benefits, right?
And a lot of times I know, at least when I was a kid like that was, it helped sometimes. It was, you know, like if a kid showed me how to do this math problem, they, you know, they spoke my language. And I got, I was like, okay, I get it now. So I just, I want to say thank you.
Thanks for that.
And I think, you know, just, you know, to kind of close up, that slide that you had with the 2.8 students, I think that to me was, it was eye-opening, you know? I did not realize it was 2.8 students per section. Whereas, and you know, I have four children. They've been in different sections of different things and some in standard, some in honors. And I, you know, it is a different experience, but I didn't realize it was just, it's literally two or three kids. It's not a half and half. And I think, you know, in the parent community, that's important to get that out. Like it is not like a half honors, half not honors. And, you know, you talked about Alex Spence and Twice Told Tales, and there are 50 kids in that class. And you can opt to take it as honors or not honors. And again, I've had kids taking that class in honors or not honors. And it, it's done seamlessly. And I think Alex is really a leader in that. You know, I have to give him serious compliments in that because he really, and it wasn't always that you could take it for either credit. It started out as just standard credit. And then a lot of kids didn't take it because it didn't have that honors credit. So by offering that honors credit, I think has really, you know, the popularity of the class is amazing. And, you know, the whole experience is amazing. But I think that slide in particular, it's important to get that information out to the parent population, just to understand that.
We're going to share the recording of this.
Yeah, I mean, the teachers still have the same high expectations for their students that they always have had and will continue to have for their students. And, you know, for the, for the couple of students in the class who may need support, they're getting that support. And for the students who have always, you know, needed to be pushed, the few in honors who may need to be extended a little further, that's not always the whole class either, right? So that's continuing to happen.
Yeah. Great. All right. Anyone else?
Thank you both.
Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. We need a break or no?
No, 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 no break. Let's go.
We're moving on.
So quickly.
So, quickly to review our goals, we forth five goals this year that were supported by thirteen individual report requests, was sort of what we named them. What I really wanted to do this evening was have a very quick, casual discussion about really the format of the report requests, and, and obviously, we value everyone's opinion, but I'm interested in people who've been here, you know, multiple years. Do you feel like the specificity that was offered, I guess, or delivered through the report requests had any sort of material change in the presentations we received, better or worse, and, and our ability to sort of stay focused throughout the year? That's kind of what I'm interested in as we, you know, as we are getting closer towards the end of the year and start, start having to begin to think about next year. So that's the sort of discussion I was hoping to have, so I'll put it out to all of you.
So I think we had the best demonstration tonight of a presentation, no slides. No offense to anybody who does slides, but it was fantastic, so.
Yeah.
I, I would echo that, and just add that part of what made it so effective was that the information that is generally shared on slides, and was shared on slides, was given to us in advance, so that the presentation was really just a narrative, like, was a story of, like, what we're seeing on the slides coming to life. So I know that there's probably a lot more work that goes into that than, but I, I would totally agree that this was a really great presentation.
Because they told us a story.
Yeah.
And I felt like I was there.
Yeah, yes.
I was transported.
Yeah, and even like today, we talked about the, we talked with Lori about this, it's been confusing even when the three of us talk about presentations, slides versus no slides, it's really hard, and it's uncomfortable sometimes. I was in a situation that I actually wanted to present slides at a meeting, at the select board meeting, and I wasn't allowed to, and I was like, but students need the slides, like, I don't want to always say, like, if someone is comfortable in their presentation.
Well, data, I think data needs slides.
So it's, it's trying to find that balance, I think that tonight, I really felt like we did that. I felt like even when we talked about math that night, and we, you know, we're talking more about curriculum, and I think it's really important to talk about curriculum, because that's what we're in the business here of doing, is by educating children, but I think it's, the conversations are great, really great.
Angel's particular, presentation was also non-slide-based and very interactive.
I just want to say on that note, like, right, if you're asking about, like, what sort of format you should be asking for in the future, I agree, that, like, getting the slides beforehand, so we can read through them, and see what they're going to present, generally, that's right, I don't know what questions to ask you if I don't, you just, you're telling me about literacy, okay, I'm not a literacy expert, I don't know what you're going to say to me. So looking at it, then I can have questions, but when I get here, I don't want you reading it to me, because while I'm not a literacy expert, I can read a slide, and I don't need that read, read to me. Like, that was always my, in school, I hated that, like, you're really just going to sit there and read the slides to us? Like, I could have stayed at home and read that myself. Like, tell me something else, so, and then it just, and it doesn't waste our time.
Yeah.
And their time, because they don't need to read to us.
Totally. What's clear to me is this is an art form and not a science.
Yes, it is, definitely, definitely.
Let's keep having this iterative conversation, I think certain topics lend themselves more to certain modes, and maybe that's the answer, is we have to look at every topic and see which way it's going to work best.
Right, and even I look at, you know, Kristen put together the, which we absolutely needed those slides, like, all that MCAS data, like, all of that.
I get that.
You know, like, we totally need that, so it's, I think it's challenging for Lori and your team, and when you bring teachers here, they're like, okay, what are we doing? Slides, no slides? So we're trying to really work together to figure out the best way to do it, and sometimes it might be, you know, trust the team to decide how they're going to present to us to have the most conversation that we can have.
Right, but when I reflect back to a similar presentation a couple of years ago, I didn't get all that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's just telling the story, and we have the data, we didn't really, it wasn't really about data, it was about just the approach and the, you know, so I just really appreciated that, and, you know, I know that wasn't off the cuff entirely, so I appreciate all the work they put into that and thought, but they are doing this every day, and I don't think it was, I think that really came from the heart, and that's what they do, so, you know, I hope that the community gets to watch that, because I think it's a really valuable thing for kids who are three-years-old, two-years-old, just to see what's coming, and, you know, to be so excited, so.
And I just think the whole, you asking us what, and us asking them what we want to hear, that, you know, will present to us, well, what do you want to know? Because there's so much.
Yeah.
So I think that helps, by letting them, you know, instead of them just coming out and, yes, regurgitating all this stuff to us, here's what we do, and then we're like, okay, but we don't feel like we got answered our que, what we wanted to hear, well, you got to let them know, what do you want to know?
Sure.
So.
So is the general consensus, report, like, not to be so basic, but report request good, that, that seems to have facilitated better conversation and ensuring, to Carrie's point, that we're getting more of what we are actually interested in.
May I?
Yes, please.
I just think Kristen made a really important point last time we had this conversation. If you give us so many report requests that we don't get to present to you what you, you don't know what you don't know, I think there's a gap there that we're creating, and that concerns me.
Yes, and what I think can bridge that gap is to have, do a better job, because again, I'm always, like, I'm not suggesting that we're going to nail it every time, I am thinking that, like, as we sort of go through this work together as a collective group, and I know we change and we come and go, but I think one of the things we missed was exactly that, and so I think next year, the administration needs to be a, a little bit more, I know they're our goals and our report requests, but like, a little bit more of an active player, and will expect it to say, you know, this is great, that you're able to map the year about what you want to hear about through your report request, but might we suggest A, B, or C? Cynthia?
So I could say, this year, what do we do too much of? What do we miss? That would be really helpful feedback.
Oh, from these guys? That would, yeah, excellent. You can be honest, we can take it, so.
No, there's been some other curriculum changes.
No, yeah, no, it can't be right now, because it's on the spot.
There's other curriculum changes you haven't heard about, and that's the community maybe hasn't heard about.
Exactly.
Because you didn't know they were happening.
Yeah, so I think it's a good lesson, so in general, I think if we're going to sort of summarize, and we'll do another sort of goal recap at the end of the year, but like, report requests are generally a positive thing, we know we like more dynamic discussion with groups. Another thing that I think was a big change, and I know that it, it means more involvement and more time, but I have, I personally have really liked seeing more of our building-based staff, like, educator staff in these meetings, I think that has been unbelievably enriching for all of us, and I don't know if that was a result of the report request, or if it was something else, I don't know what it is, but I like it.
We've always lived and flowed with that.
Yeah, so, and then points, learning points and things to improve upon are sort of working together and more collaboratively with you guys to ensure that as we map out the year, we're not missing big things, and that actually could mean, I think, we included every report request that people put out. So, what that might mean next year, as we discuss this, if we elect to sort of do it the same way, would be that we might have to be a little bit pickier. So instead of putting forth all thirteen, if the administration comes in and says, you know, like, hey, these are kind of three topics that you're missing, we might have to just be a little bit choosier about what we put out, because in fact, we only have so many meetings, and, you know, they, they tend to get long this time of year. And with that, I'll wrap this up, because I think there's a good deal of consensus on this, is everyone sort of straw-pulling, we have the same feelings? Awesome.
Yes, can I just say one more thing?
Yeah.
So, as, as terrible as it was to admit that Alexa and I went to charting the course twice, the second time, like, the first time when I got out of it was, you know, they talked about student achievements at the top, and then everything else flows underneath, and I was like, this is great, this is wonderful, but the second time I took it, I think it was Glenn that took it, he was like, your meetings should read like a book and tell a story, so you should tell the story of the whole year throughout your meetings, you should see, like, the budget through all year, you should see academically what you want to see all year, and that hit me the second time, and I do feel like we've seen a lot of different things this year, which has been great, so I don't know, will literacy be on there again next year? Maybe not, maybe we focus on something else next year, but to have kind of our own plan as to, you know, maybe we want to see more social studies, maybe we want to see more science, like, we need to see that.
There's a lot going on.
So like, I feel like we need to just, you know, continue with, here's what we looked at this year, and when we're planning for next year, kind of look at, like, okay, now what are we going to look at? And not, try not to repeat, and some things, of course, we're going to see, we're going to see Andrew a few times every year, we're going to see Angel a few times every year, but to really, you know, focus on what we want to see for next year.
And I know we want to move on, I, and I'll have this offline, but, you know, any consolidation of the report requests, because there was, there were overlaps, and there were times we were answering repeated things, and just, can we make those more efficient?
And I think, I think, again, I think that, that speaks to maybe the way that, again, again, I'm always saying, we're always trying to improve, and we're never going to get it hit it out of the park the first year, I think that, again, that speaks to the necessity of you guys being a little bit more involved in that process, and I think that's okay, they're still our goals, but you can help shape and guide them, and I think that that's okay. I think it did feel really compartmentalized this year, like, this is our process, you're out, and so maybe.
Until we had to deliver.
So, again, so this is all, this is, this is good conversation, this is how we get better.
Awesome.
Good feedback.
All right. All right, moving on to the amenities building discussion, so I am just going to start, I have some comments that I'd like to make, and then we can lead into discussion, and I know that Lori sent us some information on Friday, so not typically in my style, but I am going to read some of my comments first. I alluded to this in me reporting in the chair's report. So we met with both the Select Board and the Concord and Carlisle Finance Committees. I also met with the Concord Commission on Disabilities. I presented the slides that we discussed at the FinCom and the Disability Meeting. I was not allowed to present those at the Select Board meeting, but, which was totally fine, because I think that everybody has the proper information. So before we start a discussion on the amenities building, I'd just like to frame it with a brief history of kind of how we got to where we are today. So the Concord-Carlisle High School and Fields project was completed in 2015. There was a building there called The Lion's Den that was removed as part of that project, it's unclear, and it was run by the Lions Club. It was, it is unclear if there was actually even a restroom facility in that building. So for nine years, the regional school district has been renting portable restrooms there at the Fields during the school year. Additional restrooms have been brought in for events such as graduation, kicks for cancer, Mighty Moose, et cetera. We pay about nine to ten thousand per year to rent the restrooms. Should be noted that we did add an accessible restroom this year, but there is not a ramp or lighting into that restroom. Even when the lights are on at the stadium, some of the, quote, accessory lighting, such as a phone or flashlight, is necessary. We met with, on July twentieth of 2023, with the Concord Finance Committee, and we did reference completing the restrooms at Memorial Stadium. There is no question about the necessity of restrooms at Memorial Stadium, and while I appreciate the burden of the taxpayer to pay for this building, we cannot ignore the needs of the community to install proper ADA-compliant, a proper ADA-compliant permanent facility. There are many questions about the cost of the building, and there are also concerns from the Commission on Disabilities, the community, and the parents, and we must weigh the needs of all the stakeholders. I will also say that we have talked about this building at twenty-five public meetings since July twentieth. So there's been a lot of discussion, and I think the week before vacation, we went to Select Board, FinCom, and Carlisle Finance Committee. There's clearly some pushback that I think anyone in attendance heard about the cost of the project, and it was also, you know, last night, we sat at the Select Board hearings, and there was like laughing about the building, and I guess I just have to say that that concerns me, it's not something I find funny that we don't have an accessible restroom. So, you know, we were written about in the bridge about the greed of the school committee, and that it's challenging. I don't think this is an issue of greed, I do think that, you know, there, there is definitely challenges in both Carlisle and Concord, and I recognize that, and I want to be very cognizant of that, but this also has to be part of our discussion about the needs. So with that, I will open it up to anyone for discussion.
Sure, so what I feel like my job is, is to give you options when I see them, and Bob's going to talk in a minute about the road surplus, because we're just reconciling and closing out that project, so new information became available last week. I was at the meetings and heard the, the feedback we were hearing from both Carlisle and Concord FinCom and Select Boards, and sometimes, you know, my job is to see things align and see if maybe I have another way to give you a path to what I think we're all in agreement on, is we need to address the issue. It's the how. I, I think that's, my take is that everyone's in agreement, there is a need, and that the how is the question. So I'm going to ask Bob to just talk through the numbers, because that's a really important part of the discussion for all of you, is why there's even available funding, and what that funding is, and all of that, because that, I think, is a new, a very new piece of information, and then I'm going to just follow it up with my thoughts and recommendation on what you could consider, and then you can take it to do with as you choose. Can you just talk through the roadway?
So, the, the funding for the project in total was a million, thousand, four seventy-four, six sixty-five. There's a base project, there's some engineering costs, and then there's an ad alternate, so I'm just going to talk to it in specific pieces. We had, the base work was, was a hundred fifty-four thousand under budget for two, two factors. This is a bid that includes some estimates for volume of materials. The two biggest things that drove the increase were the landfill, as part of this access, the access road goes over the landfill, a section of it, and in our assumptions, we have to assume disposal, and we assume there's three different rates of disposal, and I got to use the word contaminated, I don't know what else to call it, but different levels of contents, there's one price of a hundred per ton, one two-hundred, one five-hundred. So we, we assumed equal weighting of materials based on advice from an environmental engineer, and it turned out pretty much all of the material we had to dispose, once we dug it up, we had to dispose of it. The material that we dug up was all the least contaminated and the lowest-cost disposal, so we saved a lot of money on disposal of the section of the road that was, had to be excavated, that was landfill, former landfill space. And then the second part of the savings was, we, based on feedback from, from maintenance transportation, we went to sloped granite curb instead of square granite, primarily for, with heavy, heavy vehicles, buses and maintenance vehicles and plows, one, to avoid damage to the curbs, and two, to avoid damage to the vehicles. And then the last piece, which I will say, I don't, it's, it's a smaller piece, but there is some variability in the actual amount of materials that you use, so there were some estimates of the amount of material that they used on a paving project, it's based on actual usage, so there was some favorability there. In total, it was favorable by, and we had a small change order, so in total, it was favorable by a hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine, forty, and forty-four cents. Engineering costs are also favorable right now, though we're, that's a piece that's not fully reconciled, because I'm anticipating some additional invoices, there's two engineers, we're working with the town engineer, they're free, thankfully, but we have a engineer that hands, that handles the environmental pieces and the landfill, and there's a separate engineer that built the design and manages to make sure the construction company's performing and following the bid specs. So I expect we'll be slightly favorable on engineering costs as well. And then the last piece is, you know, with the uncertainty about how the disposal was going to come out, it turned out to be very favorable, the costs. The lighting upgrade piece, there's an ad alternate for lighting upgrade that has not been completed, and that's a hundred and sixty-four thousand. If we were to go forward with that, that would be spent, based on feedback, the base project did incorporate some lighting upgrades, and it significantly enhanced the, the lighting that's there. I have not had one person ask about lighting since this project's been done, I've talked to the high school administration, our feeling is that we don't necessarily need to do this additional piece for a hundred and sixty-four thousand, some of it's related to the fixtures themselves.
It's all that lighting, it's parking lot, and like, ring road lighting, right? It's all that lighting, it's parking lot, and like, Ring Road lighting, right? It's not.
Access road.
Access road, sorry.
Yep.
Access road lighting.
Yeah, not the ring, I think.
Not the ring, but the access, sorry. Yep.
So, that work is not scheduled to be done right now. If the committee decided that they wanted to move forward that, we would have to rebid that. And, you know, this company did a very good job, they might come in pretty close to the price. But so you have potentially $153,000, potentially some additional engineering costs available, and then the $164,000 lighting upgrade could be available. The only piece that you can reclaim into capital stabilization, you might remember that we funded this partly from capital stabilization, partly from a capital article, partly from the operating budget.
Can we just talk that through in a little more detail? Because I think I want the whole public to be sure they're clear on how we funded the project, because that's a big part of why.
Let me read, I have that on my screen.
Did you send that out to us after the meeting? Excuse me.
What did you say, Cynthia?
Did you send this out to us? We have not seen that, right?
No.
No, from Bob, no.
Yeah, how it's funded, I, I'm just going to read what I shared at the meeting when we, when you approved it. So just give me a second.
Right. So you borrowed, I'll do what I can remember, borrowed $850,000, which is what was approved. You had $200,000 in capital stabilization.
Yep.
And then remember the moment we said that the bid was really too high, and a year ago-ish, you took what we had been using to prepay technology?
Yes, I remember this.
Because COVID allowed us to start doing that. We used the money, so we have that, we don't have that option anymore. And it now turns out you don't necessarily need all of the stabilization or the prepay money that we moved over.
What was the prepay money?
$400,000.
$400,000.
Yeah. Those are all rough numbers, Bob's going to have the details, but.
And we do have that from Lori, that email on February 16th, that has most of that information.
Most of that's there. So you have to borrow first, so the, the 850 is borrowed and being used. It's the remaining that gives you the balance of what could be available. Bob needs to talk us all through what's in capital stabilization versus, when you moved it from the operating budget, it's not a direct move into capital stabilization. It's, E and D has to be involved, so I'm going to let him do that.
What if I might, you said we should borrow first.
We did borrow.
Okay, but we didn't have to.
We, we would have had to for this.
Yeah.
The costs would have required.
We wouldn't have had a way to do the project.
My, my point is borrowing obligates us to pay more than the sum involved, we're going to pay borrowing costs as well.
Well, we borrowed based on the bid.
Right.
Yeah.
So we borrowed the full 850.
Yeah, the project still costs.
For the borrowing costs, 5% or something.
Yeah.
I mean, just to be clear on the numbers.
Yep, yep.
I mean, the project did cost over, over $1 million, so we, we had a need to borrow at least the 800.
Mm-hmm.
So the operating budget funded $421,000. This was done at the end of the year. We, we, we had been in a state where we had been.
Prepaying.
During, yeah, during, you know, during COVID, we, we got in a position where we're able to hold back our technology funding and, and pay it for the, for the next year. So FY '25 purchases made at the end of FY '24 is kind of the example. We used that prepay status, and now we're paying for technology in the current year. So that $421,000 basically that we used erased a safety net that we had in our budget. So that $421,000 from the operating budget that's going towards this project, if we don't spend that, that has to be returned to, that'll just be returned into E and D through the end of the year process. You can't, we can't take that, we can't repurpose that to anything else. Since we borrowed, we have to spend that first, so the, the borrowed money, our $1.1 million in project costs, get applied to the capital borrowing that we did, $883,000. And then the capital stabilization was reallocated to this project. What you have as options are, is to, out of that $200,000, that's for capital stabilization, you can just return that if you want to, capital stabilization.
Capital stabilization.
Up to that amount. You don't have the full $200,000 available if you think that this lighting upgrade is something we want to pursue. You have less, what you have available if you want to pursue that additional lighting upgrade is approximately $153,000, plus some potential engineering cost savings. I don't have that final number yet, but it's not going to be too significant. And so, and I think in terms of needs, I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily see a need for the lighting upgrade, just, that's my perspective.
So, a question about that. So how old are the lights? We would replace lights, is that correct?
We've replaced the, the light fixtures themselves, yes.
And are they more efficient?
They are more efficient, and they are, are brighter, too.
And how old are the current ones? About, approximately?
The current ones?
The ones that you're not suggesting to upgrade, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
We did two of them in my time, so they're five-ish years old.
You replaced all of them?
We did two out of the, I don't know how many there are totally. I know we did two about five years ago.
Right.
Part of this is to replace the poles, too, like, completely take out the poles and the.
And there's no other option to just replace the fixtures?
Well, we have, our bid docs are what they are.
No, I understand.
We have to do a different design or a different option.
Would that be an option, to put it out again?
It could, it's, it'd be, you know, it'd be a significant effort to, to go through that.
I just don't know when we'll get another chance to replace old lights.
I don't know, I think, I don't know if you need to decide all of that tonight, we have to give you all that information. I think you've got enough.
It's a lot to think about.
I think you've got enough wiggle room here that you actually could separate discussions, because you, even if you did the lights, you still have $153,000.
And you think that would be sufficient for a design?
Yeah.
It's right in the ballpark of what we got, ironically. Gail had told us 130 to 140 back in the fall.
Okay.
And I would also say, if you, if you, you know, if you do decide to return to capital stabilization, then I would say, do it with, also, the, just give us the flexibility to say, if you do have savings on the engineering costs, take that savings and also put it to capital stabilization. Right now, we're $33,000 under budget, so there might be another chunk of money beyond the 153 that we have engineering cost savings we can return to capital stabilization.
So any unused money, we will vote to return to capitals, we can vote to return to capitals.
Up to 200,000.
Up to 200, okay.
But.
But it requires a vote, right?
You could, you can vote to return the base construction costs of 153,369 to capital stabilization. You can't do anything with the lighting upgrade if you want to leave that. If that's undecided, then I can't return any of that to capital stabilization. So 153,369.44. And then there's engineering cost savings that are currently $33,000, that may end up being, that likely wind up being a little bit less than that.
And when will you know that?
Fairly soon, the town engineer is reaching out to both companies. It might end up being that that's the number, but I was expecting more costs from the engineers.
So the 164, was it just serendipitous that that didn't make it into the base bid?
I think there was some, there was, in part, no, they included it as an ad alternate. In part, there was concern that the unknown landfill costs, disposal costs, you know, if you ended up on the high side and everything was a high-cost disposal.
So it was pulled over to, to an alt?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, are you good on the state of that project?
Yes. Is everyone good on the state of the paving project?
At the moment, and I, I appreciate seeing the, the data laid out, although I'm taking this copious set of notes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe like, maybe like, like a chart or a memo type format?
I have something.
Yeah, he's good.
That'd be great, yeah.
Yeah, and we're flying.
No slide.
He took vacations.
Like a big slide deck.
Slides, right.
And this all happened on a vacation.
How do I get onto the no-slide train?
Like a 50-pin car point.
All those numbers.
Tell us the story.
That's funny.
Amount of chair, what do you want us to do tonight?
Well.
Can I offer my recommendation?
Right ahead, keep going.
That was the backdrop to my recommendation.
Yes, keep going.
So it appears you have $153,000 available in capital stabilization if you choose to return it there. My recommendation, and this is just me, all by myself, you know, I know there was talk initially of just doing the design. The reason I didn't support that initially, because I didn't think you had the way, the funds to do it, and I thought you were going to lose a year to get design at town meeting, and then go out another year to get the remaining amount. That's, that, that option has just evolved for you. You've got the money that you could very soon, not, you don't even need to wait for town meeting if you move the money over. You could very soon begin a design process and get that information, feasibility design, they would get the design done, they could get the plumbing code issue taken care of, because you can get the waiver once you get the design. You'd have schematics that are really strong and robust, you'd have, it kind of feels like you'd have a lot of the things that you're being asked for at the other committees, to better inform the bigger number. You'd also have a better, bigger number, you know? Gail did this for free, updating on the five-year-old number based on current projects without, it was the best we could do under the situation of not spending anything. So I don't think you lose time. I feel like you could get going on the design, tighten it all up, and then in the fall, when we're talking about warrant articles for 2025, you're going to be ready to go and really get this out and about, and, you know, have people able to see what you're thinking and why it costs as much as it does. I can hear the struggle they're having, it's a big number, and it's almost like you need some professionals to come in and help explain the cost of construction, the 22 bathrooms, which is down from 44, like, the, the layers that, you know, they're not totally able to absorb as fact at this point. And I just think you'd be in a, a great place to keep it going. You actually could set yourselves up that if town meeting was successful in June of 2025 in both communities, you could be ready to break ground in the, you know, late summer or fall, if we queued it all up the right way, because you're going to start now, instead of waiting till the summer, to get going and not know. If it fails, that's my other concern, after sitting through those meetings the last two weeks, if it fails, you're going to lose a whole year. Yes, I guess you can come back and do the design you could pay for after town meeting and try to not lose as much, but I've also been in these communities when things fail. It's not an easy ride going back the second time. I, I, I see a way to shore us up better proactively rather than reactively, and that seems important to me. So that's my opinion, it's just mine, but for you, for you to all do with as you would like.
Alexa, go ahead.
So, I appreciate that perspective, and I find aspects of it super compelling. However, when I was in those meetings, my perspective, and again, I will note, in those meetings, a total between the Select Board Meeting and the Finance Committee Meeting, a total of like five people spoke on this. It wasn't the whole committees really engaged in this, it was like five humans in a town of 18,000. So that, I think, is important. And I did not hear the perspective from, from those individuals, that half a dozen or so individuals, that the obstacle to this was having a rendering of a building that they could see that would help them understand. I heard more objection to the, to the project itself, and I'm just not sure that spending this $150,000 and, and providing them with the deliverables that that buys is going to, is going to change their hearts and minds. That's sort of part one. You know, what I heard more was, find yourself some better porta-potties. That was sort of the sentiment that I heard. It wasn't, oh, we need a really good bill, like, good schematic and, you know, details on the plumbing, so that we can really get behind this. So I don't think that what the, doing a feasibility study or buying this is, is going to solve the problems this year or next year. And I contrast that with the fact that apart from the, and again, these are, these are my anecdotes, so as I travel around town anecdotally, I hear mostly support for this, not just from parents, but, you know, from the Disabilities Commission, they had very strong opinions on it. So I, I, I feel like, apart from those individuals in the meetings we attended last week, I do think there's support for this. I also feel like, you know, the, the reason that I think I'm a little bit different in perspective than Lori, when I think about, you know, your purview is, your, your goals as, as a leader are to ensure, your top priority is like, to ensure the academic success and the, and the emotional success of our students, right? Like, that's your top priority. What I think is interesting in this instance is, and generally, we align, right? We're aligned with those values. I think the, the difference in sort of what we need to consider is, as stewards of the campus, the seven of us here, it is also our job to consider the community. And like, when I think about the bathrooms, just as like a metaphor and an example, right? I'll use my family, my own nuclear family to sort of demonstrate sort of how I feel. I have a freshman at the high school. I do not perceive this building to be for my freshmen at the high school. My kid can run up to that building, open up the locker room, use the facilities. He doesn't need the porta-potties. And if he had, and if he really has, can't, you know, take the time to run out, he can navigate those porta-potties. Who the, in my family, who that building is for are for my parents, for my in-laws, who, you know, we talk a lot in Concord, in all of these other meetings, not as much here, about the dignity of people being able to age in place in this community and how important that is. We talk about it a lot from a tax standpoint, so there's some irony in this. But it's not just money that is going to allow, and, and low tax rates that are going to allow to people to age in place here with dignity. It's stuff like this. You know, again, not to get, you know, sort of too detailed, but my son played on a baseball team that used those, the, the baseball fields at the high school every Saturday and Sunday for like eight weeks. On that team alone, just one anecdote, there were five sets of grandparents that lived in town that came to see those kids every weekend, and it's a challenge. So again, like, I appreciate what you're saying. Your job is students, 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 and I think what's interesting is, in this instance, we have a little bit more to consider, and I think, as stewards of the campus, and as elected officials here, I think that there's a broader scope here that isn't just about our students. So that's the only reason I.
I just want to rebut you a little. I actually think I'm giving you a path to still get it done.
No, 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 I get that.
It is important to me.
No, 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 I know that, and I get that.
I, I, I actually think it's a better path.
Yeah.
Alexa?
Yeah, sure.
I have a very, I don't know about your math, but I heard most of the people from Carlisle who were surprised. Carrie Patel told us that exact thing in October. As much as you say you've talked about this forever, 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 they were not aware.
The FinCom was not surprised. The Carlisle FinCom was not surprised. I mean, I mean, I had this discussion with Victor, and you asked me in that October meeting, you said, does Carlisle know? And when we met with them in December, they, they knew. Now, do I think that all the residents of Carlisle know? No, I don't.
Right, exactly. It wasn't really in the mosquito, which is where they get their information. The other thing is, when is the vote going to be? I don't really see this getting a shovel in the ground until next summer, because we're not going to vote until the fall. We can't, as an active campus, we're not going to be able to build this thing during the academic year, right?
Right.
So it's pretty much going to be the same schedule. So we're not saying, don't do it, we don't want to do it, we never want to do it, everybody agrees we need to do it, and I think it's going to show people a much clearer path in that we will be successful at the town vote. And I, I think that's what we all want. So if we just have to wait, wait not even any extra time, because we're going to do the study, and then we're going to come back to 2025 town meeting, maybe we could figure out a way to do the vote in the spring, right? Because we've given people a lot of information, and maybe we convince the moderator to do it before town meeting or close.
The ballot vote, you mean?
Yes.
Right? That's compelling.
That's interesting. Can you do that? Can you do the ballot first before town meeting?
Can do it.
Oh, that's compelling.
That would be super interesting.
And the worst-case scenario is, we'll hold all the elections after town meeting. I don't know.
That's compelling.
But like, that's, I didn't even think that that was a possibility, that you could vote before a town meeting vote.
Or in quick succession.
I remember we had this discussion about another vote. You can do it, there's no reason. But you have to have a pretty compelling messaging that people know what the heck is going on.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So we would need, I would say, I don't think we need to rush to do the bid because I think, again, we should do a very clear job of what we're doing with the bid because people, I heard from a lot of people, options. So if, you know, if we could get, well, we gave you options, but there's not a lot, right? But at least that's going to be a discussion that we have. I think that people like to have options.
But wait, but so, but so that was my other concern, like what, when, when these guys have been discussing options and, and I'll give Tracy credit, she hasn't discussed any of these things. She's done a lot of sort of ad hoc research on her own. This, this study, my understanding, would not be a comparison and contrast of here's what like fancier porta potties look like. We're, we're talking about the, the design of a building, so I'm worried that like, so if, if, if we don't think the study is going to miss the mark of what's been asked on us, I'm much more comfortable. I just don't, again, like I, that's just not what I heard.
Well, I, I think people want to say a, a pre-bill thing, if that's possible, is that could be cheaper.
Prefab. So, yeah, so I did, I contacted prefab company, there's one in Las Vegas, not many do these prefab bathrooms, and it's about 1.4 million dollars. Now that's without seeing the site, without thinking about anything, that's like a back of the envelope situation.
Right, but can whoever at least either eliminate that option?
Yeah, so you would do a feasibility aspect before they did the design, which is what we did, you know? Middle school is the big example where you ruled out renovating Sanborn before you decided to build new. So you could ask them to do that.
We can put that into the scope and that would be affordable within that number.
Within that number.
Okay, that's different.
I think you get so much, you bring people along with you that much more when you at least-
I agree with that. And I didn't realize you could do some of those things in the study.
That, that voting before town meeting?
Yes. Ask the moderator.
Yeah.
The town clerk.
The clerk.
Really after the clerk.
And then I have another, I have a quick question for you, Karen.
Okay, yeah, ask me.
Do you guys also have a CPC? Because I'm wondering now that this has such, gotten such renewed attention. I know that you have-
CPC.
A community preservation committee that provides grants. So I know, I know Carrie Rankin had had like a very casual conversation with a member of the CPC when we sought to take on this project and they said, eh, it's probably not in, in our scope. We've since learned that many other towns have utilized CPC grants and now I'm wondering too if this would be an opportunity now that this project has gotten a lot more attention, would we return to both towns? Because I don't think you guys went, did you, to your CPC on this project, even in a casual conversation?
You mean the amenities building?
Yes.
No, no.
Okay, great. So maybe that would be enough.
You could go as far as formally applying and making, do their work with it.
Yeah. I think I looked at Carlisle's and their, their deadlines, they might be spring. I, I'm not remembering, but I think ours is-
We're usually-
Concord is con-
It's like now.
September.
Ours is the beginning of the year. Concord is September.
Concord is September.
So you're like, like now.
We did it, yeah. We did it for the playground and it had to be done.
Yeah.
January, February.
No, CCF play went later, but they got 400K from them.
Yeah. And the other thing, I will say that the, the Commission on Disabilities, they gave me another source for a grant. They were like, you absolutely should apply to this. And I think we could use that. I mean, I think if we can offset the cost, I do think the message has to be like, there, there needs to be something. I looked into the, you know, the fancier trailers with electricity and water.
They're so expensive.
$7,700 a month and that gets you one ADA restroom and a male and a female restroom.
Right.
So three restrooms for $7,700 a month, that's excessive. And you need just, it's really kind of gross, but you need a hose and you need three, um, three, what do you call those? Plugs? Three plugs, three dedicated plugs. There's not a lot of electricity down there, so we know they're going to have to be some electrical-
Is Concord still towing a restroom trailer down to White Pond?
I don't know that.
Oh, they built the permanent structure.
Permanent portable, if you will, you know, it looks like it was-
They take it out in the winter, right?
No, it's prefab and it sits there to my knowledge.
Wellesley just did a prefab, their stadium's a little bit smaller. They got it out of, I, I don't know how they have fewer bathrooms. Maybe we could talk to Wellesley and figure out how they did it, but I, they have prefab that just went in.
I wonder if I could speak to a few things and I'll start with, with the number of units necessary. We've, we heard of the number 44, formula driven. We've heard the number four, 22, maybe we can get a variance for it. The, the truth of it is, as I understand it, we won't know the number until we get a variance. We won't know.
Design and then a variance, yeah.
So, so this idea that we're locked in at 42 or, or 44 or 22, we're making that up. We don't know yet.
That did come from the Gail study, so that was based on their reading of the plumbing code.
Right, but Gail doesn't issue permits.
No, but they are the ones, so when I went to the plumbing board-
But we know what variances are and we need-
To your point, we don't formally have a variance till we have it.
So I don't want to hold up this 22 or this 44 as this necessary objective when we don't in fact know. We don't.
I have a question. Are there instances, just a quick question, are there instances where variances greatly deviate from the 58, 50% reduction?
No, and I found all the, I went back all the years I could find minutes of the plumbing board, there were five and all of them were 50%.
Yeah, I know, we've, we've, we've heard this months ago. All I'm saying is-
Kind of no.
Well, let's contact Wellesley.
We will know when we get a permit. That's, that's when we'll know. We'll, we'll seek a variance of some kind and we'll seek one that is right-sized, not something that's preordained by some, some guesstimate.
I think it's, I do think it's more than a guesstimate.
You mentioned.
Only because, only because I've looked at a few things.
I understand.
I think it's, it's not going to be less than 22.
I'm asking for your understanding that I believe that 22 is not some set in stone number, the permitting authorities will determine what the number is. I don't think that's arguable.
When you put the variance in, you do put in what you think you're asking for.
Yeah, and I think we can right-size it to the, the level of activity at that stadium. Let me keep going if I might. You mentioned 153 in capital stabilization. That's a number you want repurposed perhaps. It's not the entire amount available, Bob?
Can you say, repeat that?
Lori, a few minutes ago, mentioned $153,000 available in capital stabilization. Does she mean of the unused 200?
Yeah, no, so it's not in capital stabilization, it could be returned to capital stabilization from the capital project. So we took it from the capital stabilization to fund this capital project. We can now take it, since the project came under budget-
No, we took 200, not 153.
Right, we took 200 and we put it into the capital project so we can, we can return it back to capital stabilization if so choose.
And let me try it again. So the 153 you mentioned of capital stabilization money you're suggesting could be repurposed, leaving us 47 to send back hypothetically to capital stabilization if, if 153 were to be used for the amenities building. Was that your, your point?
Not quite.
Yeah, no.
Okay, but your words were 153.
Well, the 153 is the surplus from the road project.
Okay.
So you could return that to capital stabilization and then yes, repurpose it for design.
All right. I, I, I do like the idea of considering feasibility prior to design. I think that we run a great risk of trying to use the sunk cost argument and the sunk time argument and telling other governmental entities, well, we've already spent this much and we've already spent all this effort. If we move ahead on feasibility and/or design, I would hope that we return to the towns of Concord and Carlisle, their FinComs and their select boards and have conversations. I think it's, it's necessary because to your point, Lori, if we go forward with something, we want to achieve what we're seeking. I like the age and place argument, but I think that cuts many ways. People want to stall to go to the bathroom, but they also want to be able to be fiscally stable and remain in their town. So we've got tensions here to deal with. It's not one, one or the other. And finally, Tracy, you led with, we, we want to lay out the history of what happened and so I'll now turn to the minutes of October 10, which you and I have discussed. On October 10, there were two motions, two votes in regard to this project. The minutes, it turns out, are inaccurate for that meeting, so shame on me, shame on any of us who didn't give us this enough attention. There was, instead of a record of those two motions and those two votes, they sort of mashed together, sense that one vote happened. And there were in fact two, and I've pointed you to the minutes in the tape and so on. There was first a, a motion and then an amendment. So the amendment took the floor and that was for design money. Quote, to request through the warrant for design money, that was defeated, two in favor and five opposed. Then the main motion returned to the floor to move that the CCRSD School Committee move a warrant article in the amount of 2.34 million for a facilities building, I think that meant amenities building, of course. And that passed by five to two.
Five to zero.
So.
Five to zero, obscene.
Oh, five, I'm sorry, five to zero, thank you. So I would ask that our new person on minutes, take a look at that, if you could forward the information to Lori so it's-
Yeah, Lori has that. And I thought, were you going to draft it? I asked her to just draft that section.
I'm not in the business of writing the minutes, but I did spell out exactly what was said.
Can you just send that to me again so I have it right at the top of my email?
I'll send it again, I'll send it again.
The fact that there were two votes, not one.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll forward it again.
Yeah. I want this building. I think it's needed, but as much as I like to do things the way I want to do things, that's not how these towns run. And like, well, I find a feasibility study is a huge waste of money. That seems to be how government works. Like, we know we need a building. Why do we have to study it?
I appreciate how these things work.
So I just don't, I have no idea what's going on in Concord and I have little idea of what's going on in Carlisle.
What?
Little idea of what's going on in Carlisle.
Amazing. Keep going. But what I know of Carlisle, it's got to pass there too.
Yes, exactly.
So you could do all this and Carlisle say no and you're back where you were.
Yeah.
And right now, my feeling of, right, it, it, it is regardless of how you feel, it was sprung on them. This is not, we're, we're going through this now in Carlisle about capital planning. Because everybody, I don't know how it is here, but we're an extremely volunteer-driven town and, which I don't know how it's lasted this long in state, right? Because when you don't get paid as a volunteer for that town, like I don't always have my stuff in on time because I'm not getting paid to do it. But I don't, they need to know. They need to know beforehand. It's just how it is. And while, while we've, there's nobody, I mean, we can point fingers at people in the past because we, I don't know, your town's been, but like we've been kicking down, we've deferred maintenance has been said at so many meetings, I can't tell you. And I, you know, who are you going to blame for that? I don't know. But it's now come time that we have to start paying for things. And to me, it's just like, well, we got to pay for these, like this, like we need toilets. You got to pay for it. If you had done it 10 years ago, it would be a lot less money. But that's not where we're at. We can do that all day, but you've got to give them time. You, you know, I think we said this back in that October meeting, that it just, they need more time. We, I know, we did this with the playground, which wasn't, we didn't, well, we did ask for CPA funding, but we didn't, you know, it wasn't a town warrant or anything, or was it? I'm not really good at all the warrant stuff. But you, you've got to let them know. And especially now where they are start, at least I can only speak for Carlisle, that they, we are starting to finally come together and have a plan. Like we've got a plan for the next five years of, you know, the DPW's getting this first and then the school can get that. Like we're finally putting all these people at the table together and talking and making a plan, which amazes me that of all the years Carlisle's been incorporated or whatever it is, that wasn't the plan. But anyhow, there's a lot of people in Carlisle, there's not a lot of people in Carlisle who come here. And I don't mean, you know what I mean? Like they don't.
Yeah, yeah.
They're like, well, how often does this get used? How many football games do you have? And I'm like, it's not, and I, my kids are in no sports. I've never been over there other than graduation. So I get that, but at the same time, I know this place gets used just because I'm not But that's not front and center with them, if you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, you know, they're just like, well, why can't they just walk up to the beater? Why can't they walk wherever? And I get that part on their hand, but it's, right, as you said, regardless of your age or whatever, like I'm going to pee myself by the time I get to the beater if I had to go to the bathroom during graduation. And I'm not, you know, so we need it. And for me, ADA, we just literally, this morning, I was in Carlisle community room and the General Counsel of the Massachusetts Office of Disability, which, right, we don't have one, you guys have a COD or whatever the acronym is, came today to do a workshop in Carlisle about inclusivity. And so it is kind of funny that at that meeting, when we're talking about inclusivity, that I was then, I came to and spoken to about the amenities building. And I'm like, ah, like we just talked about this. We need this. I know we need this building, but we also need the people in Carlisle to vote for it. And if the parents who most of the schoo, you know, I, I don't know how many kids we have up here in the high school, what do we, we send like 60 every year, so there's 100, 240?
Close guys.
I'm only speaking for myself. I have no idea what goes on up here. My kids don't tell me anything. We know all the kids in Carlisle, not all, everybody, but we're very, people are in there. We're in there, you know, I'm sure you guys at your school, we're in there for recess, we're in there for library, we're, and that's what those parents are thinking of. They're not even thinking about the high school. We have a hard enough time getting the elementary parents to figure out what's going on in middle school for us because we're all in the same building. They are not even thinking about the high school. So if the town doesn't know, and in our town, we have 150 people though, that's our, that's our-
Town meeting.
I've been going to town meetings since I've moved here.
Yeah.
And I don't remember, I'm bad at math. 2013, I am usually one of a handful of people under 60 and we usually have to call people and say, come, to make quorum. Oh, yes.
They have a quorum.
There's a hundred over there, Karen.
Well, we did, we reduced it with COVID. I don't know if it went back up.
I've been there while people are texting, we're trying to get somebody to come.
They literally can't start.
So if you don't get, as I always call them, the younger people, which I mean the kids, the people with younger people to town meeting to vote, it's not going to pass.
It's really compelling.
The people without kids in the school, they don't, they're not going over there. They don't care. And I don't mean they don't care, I'm not, I'm not the best, I am, you would never put me out front and center to get you anything.
I don't know, you're doing pretty good.
We're going to put you front and center in Carlisle.
But that's, that's just, I mean, I, I'm on a committee now that I, right, I'm not, I'm not trying to be ageist, but it's, I don't know, Concord is, but Carlisle's a gray and, as they say, gray in place or, there's some phrase they use. Age in place, we have a lot of old people in Carlisle.
So does Concord.
Yeah.
And it's, as much as they are about education, this to them is an education. It's the football field and it's the frivolous stuff and those, blah, blah, blah. So you, you've got to get them on board. And like I said, like it's always sort of whatever to me that we have 5,000 people in And they're mostly over 60. And we just know you have different, not everybody, obviously. We've, I'm sorry, I have no idea what you are, either of you. But, you know, we do have some older people on school committee who do care, but a lot of them, a lot of them don't.
You're on a roll. Just keep going.
Keep going. Just keep going, Carrie.
That's okay. I think we.
This is, when I ran for school committee, I had people come up to me and go, well, we should just get rid of the school, and it'd just be an, I was like, how are you going to pay for anything? We don't even have, we have firms. So it's just, it's a different mentality.
Yeah.
I'm like, we have no tax base. That is our whole thing. So you've got to get them on board. And that's so.
Sold. And I think, like, regardless, but I think the important thing is, regardless of, like, what's gone on with this whole discussion, and everybody's talking about, you know, this amenities building, we have brought an awareness to the fact that we want an accessible campus for all to enjoy. And I think that, like, our job is done. Like, that is excellent. Now, it's the means, our first step.
Our first step.
And our job is done. It's a means to getting there, and I think we can, we all agree, like, we need to do something about it. So if we can get it done and get it passed and do it the best way possible, Lori's given us a path. We've, we've heard from almost everybody tonight, you know, just talking about where you stand on it. We've obviously heard from Carlisle, Concord, FinComs, Carlisle, Concord, Select Boards. We know that both towns are pressed for money. We both, we know that both towns have, like, capital planning situations. I do think we need to recommit to the capital planning process. I think that things went a little bit askew. It's tricky at the region, too, because we don't fit into a Concord box or a Carlisle box. We're, we're sitting right in the middle. We need both towns, and I, I think we just need to keep saying that. The region is just a different, it's a different thing. And I think that, you know, going forward, the other recommendation that I would have is that we have a capital planning process for CCHS. And it has to be front and center. Like, hear what our needs are. We're now hearing about needs. And, and put it out there on a document that everybody can see. And the amenities building will just keep coming back until it gets built, because I, I think that's kind of where we're at. Alexa.
So if we were to take a vote this evening, we could vote essentially to transfer, I don't know what the right words are, the 154, Sam.
I don't think we're ready to vote on money tonight.
Okay.
We have.
Okay. So at our next.
I'm not saying I wouldn't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But have the next, maybe the next meeting, vote on a transfer.
So what we would do.
I'd also like to understand at the next meeting, the voting piece.
Okay.
Whether that's even an option, a voting before town meeting next year.
Oh, okay, sure.
But you have to ask in both towns.
Both towns, so we have some homework.
Okay, we have homework. So this is what sort of I wanted to recap. So let's pretend we were going to move forward with the superintendent's recommendation. What we would essentially do would be somewhat swiftly, transfer money to capital, back to our capitalization stabilization fund, and then reallocate that money towards a feasibility.
Feasibility and design.
And design.
Okay. At which point, that process would kick off, like, the next week, the next month, whatever, quickly, swiftly.
We have to get an RFP together and get a.
Okay, but again, swiftly, not in July. This would be like in April, May. At which point, generally, how long do feasibility studies take to conclude?
Well, I mean, what we're talking about for feasibility is, they said options. We've already done a feasibility with Gail, so.
But we didn't look at options.
Right. So the feasibility is what are the other options.
Okay.
And it's about giving some sense of, here's, you already know this option, here's another option or two.
Yeah. I don't think it'll take that long, because there aren't that many.
There aren't that many.
And then.
We would discuss that, and then we would commit to one of the options, and then the design process would commence. What I just want to ensure is, if we committed to this process, would we, would we have the ability to have something to present for the CPC deadlines in the fall in Concord? I don't know, maybe we could.
I think we're past Carlisle.
Well, maybe not, if it's like.
Maybe they're rolling. Maybe they're rolling.
Or maybe if it's April, we can give them what we have, regardless, something like that. And then we would put a warrant article in the December timeframe for next year's town meeting, which would allow us to break ground, you think, in the spring or fall.
It would be tight, and to the point, your window is summer, right? So you'd have to try to really choreograph it, so.
And here's the other thing about 2025. 2024 has a plethora of elections. 2025 doesn't have them.
Right.
So you're probably going to have to have a special election, no matter what. So.
For something, anything, you mean?
Right. So doing it sooner rather than later is not as big an argument, correct?
Though, not to, just to play devil's advocate on that, having an election, a special election, is also very costly to the town.
But we're going to have to have it anyway. I'm saying.
She's saying that there's going to be some other issue, so we can.
No, 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 there's no elections, basically, in 2025. You know what I'm saying?
But in 2024, we could piggyback off of elections.
Right, which I actually, one of my bigger concerns, because this is what delayed the road, was the, they, the Select Board wouldn't put this special election on, and we piggybacked on the state primary in September, and we lost months on the road project.
We did, yeah.
I suspect that could happen again.
I think that's actually a really.
So, oh.
And here's the great news, we might have a Prop 2.5 override in 2025, so you could have that election anyway.
But, but.
I'm kidding.
But so, but to your point, Carrie, so your concern would be, we would put this on the warrant, and then the Select Board, if, if, sorry, if it went to town meeting, is there a scenario where the Select Board, and it got, let's say it was, it passed, is there a scenario where the Select Board can say, yeah, we don't really feel like having a ballot?
No.
Election? No.
They would accommodate us, but, but I worry, given what we've heard from FinComs and Select Boards, and from Carrie tonight, that if we are, if we act in a way that appears to be in haste, we're not going to bring along the constituents we need to bring along.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
I just wanted to, I did double check, and I, I knew I was right, yeah. January.
It's January.
Ours is January 9th, so this year already passed for us.
That'll work.
That's helpful.
What I heard loud and clear, I don't know what others heard, but what I heard loud and clear is that the schools, especially after the middle school projects, although it was, are obligated, my word, not only did I actually hear anybody say that, are obligated to work their projects in the context of other projects. That they, we can't just act unilaterally. We can't go, go it alone anymore, the way we did with the middle school. That there's going to be a capital planning process, and we're going to have to debate and discuss and negotiate, and then take our turn, and everybody else is going to have to take their turn in a coordinated way, which I think is what you said is happening in Carlisle as well. And if we try to defy that, I think we really put this whole project in peril.
Because at least in Carlisle, the sentiment is that the reason why there's so much deferred maintenance in town is because the school got all the money. So.
As much as I love five-hour meetings, what are we going to do tonight?
We can table this discussion and bring it back.
So we're not going to have a vote tonight?
I don't think we, I don't think we're, I don't think we have sufficient consensus or information to do it.
Yeah, we'll get more information. The only thing that I will say is that the hearing is on March 7. So.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
When we get to the hearing, it's going to be a little bit messy, and I'm happy to take that, because this is a school committee issue.
You're welcome to take that.
I will take that. And I, you know, I, I love talking to everyone at the hearing, so I'm happy to say we are in a process right now of discussing the amenities building. Here are some things that we have talked about. We don't have a formal vote at this juncture. We have not voted to remove it from the warrant. But we are considering other options right now. Is that fair? Are you, are people okay with that?
I think that's accurate. That's all you can do.
Like, if we just, if I just give an accurate recollection of what we just talked about, how we did not take a vote tonight, we will in a future meeting, take a vote before town meeting. Is that fair and enough?
So what I'm hearing you say now is, the, the item on the warrant article is something that you, you don't intend to move tonight.
We, I put it there as a placeholder, because I didn't know if you would use it or not, and I didn't want to, if you, if you didn't have it, you'd have fewer options.
We wouldn't be able to vote.
I didn't know what you would do or not.
Why would we postpone it if the sentiment tonight is, we don't see a way forward for 2.34?
Should we stop poll? Or no, people don't feel comfortable with that? That's fine.
Well, I was concerned with a vote coming up before we had everything, and before we had two meetings to discuss it. I mean, honestly, that was like my concern, because we typically discuss one, vote the next.
Yeah, so I, so, and I, I think, too, I wouldn't, well, no, I don't mind that, but I.
I'm just trying to make everybody happy.
I know. My concern would be, I would not be willing to take a vote on pulling this warrant without committing to, concurrently with committing to a path forward, if that makes sense.
Well, I would commit to a path forward. I just wouldn't want to vote the number tonight. Because I just want to, I wouldn't look at the.
Then I think we shouldn't vote, then.
Well, no, so, I just would like to know more about the lights. But the lights don't really impact this decision. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So I guess I'm comfortable.
We could put that in another.
Is everybody else comfortable voting the number tonight?
I mean, I think I'm in the minority, but I'm, I'm total, I'm happy to vote it tonight. I absolutely hear everything Carrie said, and I think she made an incredibly compelling argument. And I don't disagree with it. My only hesitation is that I, I think by going this path, I mean, again, we could, it could fail at both town meetings or at one town meeting, and all of this could be for naught. But.
It's at the town meetings, at the poll.
It's both.
Well, yeah, but that's where your biggest peril is.
Whatever. It has to get by all of them. But my hesitation is that on voting tonight is just that we don't actually have, we don't have a path forward. We don't know, we don't have the information. I feel like, I don't, I don't have, I don't know that, I mean, I was a poll worker before I did this, and running elections is really expensive. And also, I'm not convinced that the town would necessarily do a special election just for the amenities building. And that would defeat the purpose of saving money, you know. I, I just think that there's a lot of unanswered questions that I would rather get answers to before we vote on it.
It might not be, we.
But I'm one vote. I am one vote. I am not the.
I'm just saying, I don't think they're going to commit to us to do the election.
No, of course they're not, but we could.
Is it a possibility?
Yeah. Is it even a possibility before town, before town meeting? That's a.
Or even after. I'm saying right after.
If it was in quick succession after town meeting and.
Forty-five days.
Delayed thing with the road. Either is, I think, okay.
We voted the middle school.
But it just seems really unlikely that.
To the day of what you need to wait.
Yeah.
I think the, the evidence that we've heard, the towns of Concord and Carlisle would be clearly signified by us pulling back the warrant article. And I think pulling back the warrant article is a necessary precondition to, okay, what is a different process that is going to bring the two towns on board with great, much more confidence than we have now? Because I don't know if I'm a minority, but I have very little confidence that we could move this successfully. And if we did, and even if we passed, I think the divisiveness that it would create between this school committee and other entities like Select Boards and FinComs probably would, we would regret it, I think, long term. I think we can get what we want, but I think we've been told loud and clear, you don't get to just jump the queue and push this through.
And, and the, the only other thing that I will just, well, the meeting is not up yet, but the Commission on Disability, they were all in support of this. And they, and I'm just, I'm just giving information. They were like, they were like, well, the town should have thought about their spending before this. I mean, it was, they were like, this is important, like, like, this needs to happen. So I just give everybody all the information that I have, just to think about. And I, and I do think we have to think about that aspect of it.
Yeah, they would be derelict if they didn't.
Yeah. And I, and I, and I do think they're going to strongly advocate for it. So that is to come. We haven't seen it yet, but I think we probably will see it at some point.
But to that end, I'm sort of on Carrie's bandwagon, like, I'm prepared to vote to amend the warrant, not, not.
Amend.
Like, for a feasibility study and a design. So I'm not.
So you're going to ask for the money instead of using the money?
Oh, no, shoot, you're right. Nope, I'm not for that.
We don't need the money.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Jeez Louise, I'm all, it's, you're right, it's five-hour meetings. I'm a little out to lunch. I, again, I, I think, I think I want, I think I would prefer to wait and have two votes to be concurrent, so that.
I'm going to just remind you, you're in Boston on March 12, and we've typically not done a lot of Concord business when you're not in town. Just saying.
Alexa, think of the political wisdom of actually bringing the, the item to town meeting. You are bringing it forward in a modest way that gives you a, a small commitment.
Oh, instead of using our stabilization.
And, you know, motivation theory is pretty simple on this idea. You know, once I, once I take one bite, I'm obligated to consider another bite. So you're, you're doing a, a very modest number.
Right. So again, so you're even further saying, we got to wait to take this vote, because we have some things to discuss.
And just another thought, yes, we have the money, but can we use that money to offset the eventual build of the bathrooms?
Yes.
And we use that 150,000, or it could be even 317,000 if my.
I'll offer another path forward. We, we're going to have an exec session next week because of, anyway, so let's just piggyback. Let's have a both.
No, we need a public.
Oh, it's for Concord.
You can't do that.
No, I'm saying, let's, let's have a meeting, too.
I think we should do this in person.
Yeah.
Oh, because we're on Zoom. Okay, great, fine.
I do.
So we typically don't do a lot of this business in Boston. We can do it in Boston. Do.
I think this is going to be a long discussion.
We have a full agenda.
Yeah.
We're building it right now.
I think this is going to be too long of a discussion.
I don't think it's appropriate for us to, I just, it just doesn't feel right to have a long, drawn-out conversation at that particular meeting about.
I agree. So then our only issue is, what do we say at the hearing?
I mean.
Look at me.
I'm going to, I'm going to have to take.
That's the issue. I'm not suggesting that you solve it. I'm saying that is the.
You know, I love that podium, but I'm not.
Somebody, somebody at the meeting is going to know exactly what happened.
Well, right, of course.
I think we can say, yeah, I, I think it's, yeah, I think.
To be honest.
It's to be honest.
And she's willing to go out there and be honest.
I'll go out there and be honest.
I think, I think the chair needs to send a memo to the chairs of both Select Boards and FinComs with a little summary of all this, so the hearing isn't the first time they formally know.
You know I love a memo.
Then you'll be able to gracefully say, we're trying to.
We're trying to figure out, we heard you, and we're trying to figure out a path forward.
Yes.
Even though they don't have a hearing, be sure to copy.
Even though there's a hearing, right? Oh, yeah, yeah. But, so we will absolutely send it to both Select Boards, both FinComs, just with a memo update. I will talk about it at the hearing. I'm happy to talk about it, because this was a school committee decision that we made. And then we will come back in our end-of-March meeting, and we will take a vote.
Will you give us 24 hours with the memo before it goes out?
Oh, yeah. Oh, definitely, definitely. So would you like me to send the memo for feedback first? We can't, well, you can only send me feedback on the memo.
Well, that was my point.
Yes, 24.
Twenty-four hours.
Give us 24 hours to tell you.
Give me 24 hours to write it first. No, I'm just kidding.
Because you're going to represent all of us.
Yeah, yeah.
It'd be good for us to.
And just do not reply all when you see the memo. Only reply to me, and I'm happy to incorporate feedback. If I would have thought about it, we could have written that tonight. We could have done it together, but that would have extended our meeting.
We wouldn't have known what to write.
We wouldn't have, like, this is why I'm glad we had this discussion, because I think it's important. We're being transparent about it, and we're having a thorough discussion, which I honestly, I, I, you know, I think I said it to you before. I said, I have no idea where this is going tonight. I literally don't.
Well, there's one, one takeaway I think anybody can, can share, and that is that the groups that did talk to us have been heard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was well in evidence tonight.
Yep. And I think we're really trying to be thoughtful. So, okay. So with that, I'm going to check that off. And Sharon, moving on to second read of policies. All right.
Maybe a little faster.
I'm going to try to make it brief. First, I want to thank Carrie Rankin for chairing the last meeting for me, so thank you. And if I miss something, please jump in and let me know.
My pleasure.
So we reviewed 17.
Never miss another one, sorry.
So we reviewed 17 policies. Eight were recommended for removing, eight updated, and one was a, we needed to take it back to MASC for clarification. So I'll start with that one. It's not on our list, but that was, that was JL, Student Welfare. And for that, we went back to MASC and asked them to clarify, make some clarifications, because that policy was focused on K through 8, and not 9 through 12. So I did speak with Alicia, and she recommended that, well, she didn't make a commitment to change at their level. She recommended that we tailor it to our district, and so, for that policy. So that's the recommendation from MASC.
And that's not on our list for approval, though.
It's not on our list, but I, that was a follow-up.
Okay, great.
Either we would tailor it for K-12, or we would have it land in K-8 Concord? Is that what you're trying?
I wasn't, I wasn't here for that discussion, so I'm not sure. The policy has a lot of different topics in it, so you'd probably tailor it for different levels and break it out within it.
We'll take it up in the next.
We can take that up in our next policy meeting.
Next policy meeting.
Awesome.
Cynthia's like, I'm getting out of here.
They've got other things.
Okay, great. And the eight policies recommended for removal were mostly because they were district policies and they did not exist at the MASC level, and those were JLA, JLB, JLCCA, JLCCAE, and, let's see, JLD, JLDBD, JP, and that was it. The updated policies were, do you just name them or go into?
I don't even, do we need to?
I don't think you need to.
Okay, so.
A quick question, again, just to clarify these, now that I'm looking back at them, these ones that we're removing, we're removing them because they're like state law or something already?
Redundant.
Okay, thank you. I'm like, is reporting of child abuse neglect, like, but, right, it's because it's our, yep, that's, thank you.
And that one, too, did you mention?
Did I, JRAR was one for removal, that was student records.
Yeah.
And the other eight were just updates.
Great. So, all right, so we can talk about that in the vote, we can vote on it in the vote, but any other questions, comments? Thank you, Sharon and Carrie, how about that?
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
And next, we're going to move on to the FY25 CCRCSD budget update.
Yeah, so Bob and I just thought, well, one, you know we're not a guideline in Concord, so, and I know we've had an ask from Carlisle to reconsider the number, too, and, you know, unfortunately, the movement we've had over the last two weeks is going in the wrong direction, so we just wanted to say that to all of you and probably share it when we talk with the finance committees. Do you want to mention some of the.
Sure.
Moving pieces?
There's a couple, three, three big things. The, the main thing is the revenue projections that we received from the state come out, have come out, and we are, the, the projection for next year FY25 versus what's budgeted is short approximately $84,000. When you're short in revenue, you're obligated, as a regional district or municipal entity, to make up the revenue deficit by reducing your spending, so, I mean, we can't spend our full budget, we have to underspend it by $84,000 next year, so we already know that we, you know, there, there can be some changes, and I'll go into this a little bit. The, the key drivers are Chapter 70, we're about $20,000 under, that's, that's enrollment-driven, there's a lot of factors going into Chapter 70, there's the Student Opportunity Act, that's positive impact, the enrollment declines, a little bit affecting it the other way, so overall, that's down about 20, and then the, most of the rest of it is from regional transportation, the assumptions in terms of the reimbursement rate from the state are, appear to be less than what was, what we received last year, so that's the, really the, the main driver is the, the regional transportation. There is some possibility that that changes throughout the state budget process, which goes through multiple steps, and it's not completed that yet, but, you know, I don't, I don't know that we're going to make up $84,000 through that process, also at the same time, when a lot of the news we hear about state-level finances is not positive, so, I would say, you know, my outlook is, let's just, we should expect to be $84,000 under budget on revenue, if we get a nice surprise, that's good. You know, there's some possibility, if interest rates stay where they are, we have a little bit of favorability there, but I just feel like what I see, I will tell you from my seat, is that we, I know we have pressures, and I do know we have, you know, I really want to meet targets as well, but I, I do feel like there's a little bit of, the lens we look at is, well, those are savings opportunities, they're, they're there, and we sometimes forget that there's other offsets, so this is one, this is $84,000 in revenue. We also have some significant athletics costs, now, to some extent, we can absorb these in the revolving fund, but that can't, that can't go on in, you know, permanently.
What are the costs?
Primarily in ice, right, ice rink rental time costs have gone up significantly, over $70 an hour, and increases in, in ice rink rental time.
I think we're going to have to add on for the hockey, most, many, I looked around, many goes from 100 to 150, 75 sometimes extra for ice hockey, because all.
Are you talking about in their athletic fees?
Correct. I think we really need to look at that seriously, because it's not equitable to go into the revolving fund when track is using X dollars, I think we need to look at the budgets of these athletics.
So that's, I mean, that's something that's a separate discussion, it's not, and that's not the only thing driving the athletics costs, there are some repair costs, the coaches' salaries are a little bit above where we budgeted, and we do have more teams, so those are kind of the core costs, I do feel like we have stabilized other parts of the budget, you know, we had, we had kind of brought in the utilities up and repairs and maintenance costs up a bit, as the building gets older, for the repairs and maintenance has been important, so I think in other areas, we've, we've stabilized, but these are, you know, the, the revenue pieces, you know, we, we can't just fall short in revenue, we, we have to make up the expense, on the expense side.
I know, it was shared with us in writing, can you give us the athletics number, the new?
We're still confirming, the ice is the big one that jumped out at us.
The ice, I don't know if you have it written for me. I think, I think the, the rental time went from $300 an hour to $370.
I mean, total, what is this?
Oh, $60,000.
Today's picture.
I think, I think it's gone up over $60,000.
Okay. Thank you. And that's total rentals, repairs, coach salaries, that's the gap.
Yeah, most of it's ice.
Yeah, and I, I think as part of our process next year, too, we'll do a comprehensive, like, look at athletics in terms of, not just a general fund budget, but, you know, almost like an athletics revolving budget, we don't typically do that for the revolving funds, but I think it's probably time to kind of just take a look at total fund sources, total fund uses.
It is one of our bigger revolving funds.
Yeah, and it's been, it's had a nice balance, it served as a safety, and now, as it's getting a little bit smaller, it's time to kind of take a hold-the-stick look at it.
Bob, can I just get a clarification? So you're saying that $84K revenue, that is money we normally get from the state, we're not going to get?
No, it's, it, well, we're still going to get it, it's just going to be the shortfall, we're, instead of getting 4.7 million, we're going to get 4.379, so it's, it's just a decrease.
It's less than what we budgeted is the real issue.
Right, okay. Thank you.
The other piece is a significant one-time item, now, this isn't necessarily a budget driver, but it is a large amount, and I wanted to kind of highlight this, people are aware we're exiting MEIA as part of that.
Minuteman.
I'm sorry, we're exiting Minuteman.
It's 10.
Moving to MEIA.
We understand, we get it.
Which will be a good change and provide some stability. As part of that process, being in Minuteman, they're going to dissolve, they have, with the carriers, they have agreements that the carriers need, they've asked for reservations of six months of runout claims, which are claims that are related to June 30th and prior of this year, but that the reimbursement requests and the bills come in afterwards. Our assessment for that is $396,000, the exact number is $395,887.51, and that's an estimate of our share of the runout claims, it may end up being a lesser amount, it may end up being a higher amount. This needs to be funded by E and D, I have to, I will bring this forward formally at another meeting, but we've been very close to the 5% cap, this would bring it down a little bit more than a percent, a little bit below 4%, I think. A couple of things about this, this, these runout claims, they have a fund balance, they're not using that all to fund the runout claims, they're, so there's some possibility, like with EDCO, that we, we fund this and then the dissolution costs occur, and we get some type of refund afterwards, in fact, I would expect we get something back later that'll just get returned to E and D, but in the meantime, we have to commit $395,000 to pay for the runout claims related to exiting.
So you're going to bring that to us to take out at E and D?
Yes.
Future meeting, $395,000.
Yes, and I have to notify both towns, I'll write, I'll draft something.
You'll draft it, okay.
They need 45 days to respond, I mean, I don't think that, there's no other, other sources to do this are, are not.
Is there a rush to do it, like, do we have to do it at our next meeting, can we wait till the?
No, in fact, we can't, there's not a rush, it has to be done before the end of the year, the NSG knows it's, it's complicated for the town as well, they might have to do it at a town meeting, we, because we're using E and D, don't necessarily have to do it at a town meeting.
Okay.
But I want to be proactive with the towns and communicate it to them, so they are aware, I think it makes sense why we're doing it this way.
This number's locked in, sounds like, that's, that's the number.
Yeah, they, they sent us, I, there's a meeting in two days, we'll look at, like, they've sent the, this is, I think, the real number, I don't think it's going to change, but it's a formal meeting to approve these.
Okay.
And then, the last piece is just, we can't vote it until we have E and D certified and, and it's being reviewed by.
Okay.
The Department of Revenue right now. So those are some cost pressures, and I also just wanted to add, too, like, there was a comment made at, I think at the FinComs Select Board meeting, we cannot use capital stabilization money to subsidize the operating budget, I think, some of the, there might be some awareness that we have some savings on the capital project, there's no way you can repurpose capital money, shift it to cover an operating budget, so I just wanted to make that clear for anybody who's listening.
That's actually helpful, yeah.
So that is where we are.
With the region, okay.
Yeah.
Any questions, comments, thoughts, no? Okay. All righty, so, on to our action items, so we are not going to vote on the amenities building, we had a lot of discussion, but we're not going to vote on that, and we are going to vote on the school committee policies, does someone want to make a motion?
Move to approve the policies as submitted tonight.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Thank you, Sharon and Carrie.
Yep. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And just in the, in the votes, you should note, because we have both, so it's, the Concord members are voting for both, and the regional members are voting.
Aye for both.
For the region, so let's just do it one more time, so if you're from Concord, just say aye for both, we're just going to try it, we haven't, like, done this.
I know, they used to do it.
Okay, so we're going to.
Used to be really good at it.
All in favor?
Aye for both.
I don't know that they can even hear that. Thank you. And with that, I will adjourn the Regional School Committee, and lucky Concord is going to stay in session.
And this is just a quick update from the superintendent, we.
Thank you, Sharon and Carrie.
Thank you guys so much.
Have a good night.
Sorry for being rude and just moving right in. If Lori could just provide us with an update, she has been in contact with the Town Manager's